Tuesday, May 27th meeting. Mr. Montgomery, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Gilman.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Rule.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Mang.
Here.
And would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Of course, Mayor. Welcome all. Please rise as you are able to. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have an approval or any changes to the agenda?
I'll move to approve it.
Hold on a second. Okay, wonderful. All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Rule? Okay. Great. Any oppositions? Okay, we have approval of the agenda. Any commission reports?
I know of none, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'll move on to public communications. And I have Jeffrey Starkweather and Larry Steingold.
Good evening, again. At your last meeting, you approved a RFQ for a city attorney. And I just wanted to point out that one of the areas that was left out, which I think is a big hole, is the Brown Act. And, but secondly, that's not really what I'm talking, came, talk about. I think one of the big areas we're, need a good attorney for now is elections law. Because I feel very strong that our district voting has been a disaster for the city. And if we were to, and as your attorney pointed out, there would be legal problems with going with at-large and ranked choice voting. And it would be a cost problem to set up the system. However, it is illegal to go to ranked choice voting because we are not a charter city. We are a general law city. Secondly, there's nothing that prohibits us from proceeding to at-large, except for a lawsuit. And I, I don't think that we would lose a lawsuit. But regardless, I think it'd be worth going for because if we consider all the things that we've done in the last two years that have brought on lawsuits, hundreds of thousands of dollars, it doesn't seem to stop this council in the past anyway from going forward like rank choi-, I mean, like the, the reach code, which you were told from the beginning that was illegal. Also, if you look at, we've had a history since then. We've had one Hispanic elected since 2012. It's a Verolar. He ran in a three-person at-large race. He got the sec-, second highest vote, almost the same percentage as the incumbent mayor at the time, Betsy Clapp. He ran in 2016 for mayor. He came in second out of the three white, two other white voters. Uh, he lost fairly significantly, but in 2018, running against the incumbent mayor, he came within, well, he got forty-seven point three-nine percent of the vote. And I would say we have a system now that the highest percentage of vote besides the mayor of the people that voted in the election was Mr. Whitman. And he got fifteen percent of the people that voted. We have two other council members that won by, what, thirty-five and seventeen? And got nine percent and twelve percent. So there's only one person on this, and one person that didn't have any counsel at all. So there's only one person on this board that actually represents the city. That is unacceptable.
Thank you, Mr. Starkweather. Larry Steingold.
Larry Steingold, Ojai. Good evening. I actually agree with Jeffrey. All right. The fact that districts are not being treated as districts, whereas you're a city councillor for a district, you should be swapping votes to get things for your district versus other districts. That's how districts function. You fight for the district that you get, and you give something to get something. That's why there are districts. Right? One district wants a road, the other one wants this. They trade votes, they get it accomplished. You're oper-, you're functioning as all for the city, which is a good thing. Which is why we should just go to at-large city council. So you could represent the whole city instead of your district, which you're not doing because there's no particular reason to do it. It just sounds good to make other people feel good that they're getting representation. But everybody's getting represented here. So, thank you. And the Arts in the Park was a wonderful success, I believe. Most of the people made money. We had a lot of people come here, and they all left. And that's great. They don't hang around, we don't have condos on the hills. We don't have lots of other things. They all leave, and it's very nice. Sunday at one o'clock, two, Monday is, was wonderful, and today. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steingold. And then, just to remind people, our goal number nine, one of the tactics under communication and relationships is research feasibility of an acting measure M, meaning it's on our minds. So, thank you very much.
I just wanted to respond to one thing.
Yeah.
Mr. Steingold said. Swapping votes is potentially a crime.
Let's not have a big, wait, Larry.
No, I'm just, I'm just raising it. I don't want the public to be confused about that, but it's, it's, it's a tricky thing to do without committing a crime.
No crimes will be committed on our watch, if at all possible. Renee Roth, please. Save us from the rabbit hole. Thanks.
Oh my gosh, the three, the Three Musketeers are at it again up here. I'm sorry to have to make you endure this, but. Renee Roth, I just want to bring up that at your May 13th Goals, Priorities, Tactics Workshop, you had identified wildfire safety and risk mitigation as a top priority for our community. And you had all agreed on that as a number one priority at the very beginning of the process. You discussed defensible space, building standards, public education, and a yes, no landscaping checklist. I was so happy to hear all these great things you were discussing. But there was one important, major gap that I do believe we need to address. And it's glad, I'm glad Lucas is here because he can help us do this. Ojai needs to formally identify and remove higher, high fire hazard trees and flammable vegetation, especially in public spaces, city-owned parcels, and along evacuation routes. It's commonly called an eva-, um, a vegetation management plan. And what that means is you know that there are certain fire hazards around residential areas that need to be removed because they cause spreading of fires. The city of Ventura has already adopted Ventura County Fires Prohibited Plant List, Guideline 410, and published bilingual Fire Hazard Reduction Program Guidelines. As we all know, the deadline for getting your vegetation managed was June 1st. And our church had somebody come through and wipe everything out, including the vegetables in the vegetable garden. So, there are best practices that we really should be following. And they're available for us to look at and follow, and easily. The city of Malibu has Fire Safe Malibu website that has a lot of great information. And the Fire Safe Council has also urged the removal of flammable invasive plants. And written grants to do so. But most critically, CalFire has designated nearly all of Ojai as a very high, in a very high fire hazard severity zone. I see the fire chief is one of the fire people is here with us tonight. So, Measure C was passed by the voters specifically to fund wildfire prevention. Yet, I've seen almost none of that money spent on vegetation management or fuel reduction. That needs to change. I hope tonight your CIP project budget can change that. I understand you're not plant or fire hazard experts. You don't need to be, that's okay. You can work with people who are, and we do.
Thank you, Ms. Roth. Anything online?
Mayor, we currently have no raised hands, but let's just speak to our Zoom participants and give them one last call to raise their hand for general public comment on tonight's regular meeting agenda. Last call, no raised hands. And we will move on.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the consent calendar, does anybody want to pull anything from the consent calendar?
I have a question about something.
Okay.
With, um.
Your microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's good.
Okay, with our me-, um, the minutes from last meeting, closed session item number one, where it says, um, public employee performance evaluation. It wasn't a performance evaluation, it was discussing the requirements for the RFQ. So I just think that it's, you know, we had done Mr. Summers' review a couple meetings before that. So, it wasn't discussed at that meeting, and I just wanted to make the record clear to state that, please.
That's okay. So my, my understanding of the meeting, it's, it's similar, slightly different. It was that we had talked about the performance review, which led into what we would want to be on the RFQ. So to me, they were very closely aligned, not one or the other. So, that's my take on it.
Okay.
I, I will just say I don't remember us reviewing the city attorney during that meeting. I remember us deciding that we would, at the next meeting, review the RFQ. That's my memory of what happened. So.
Please.
So, without opening up closed session information, the things that we talked about in meeting number one, which were, was the meeting before this one, this was, that was a continuation of what we had talked about before. And so the performance evaluation part came in that meeting, and this was the response to that. So I also see them as being connected because it, we didn't finish with the business of the review in the meeting before.
Yeah, I don't want to belabor the point either. But I will say that the standard for the Brown Act is to be narrowly construed. So the question is, were we reviewing the city attorneys? Was it a personal review for the city attorney? That's the standard, but I will defer to Councilmember Mang as to what she would like to do. We can take a vote to change the minutes and more accurately reflect what at least some of us understood to have been going on in that meeting. Or, we can say that we are satisfied with having verbally discussed it amongst ourselves and deliberated. So, it's, it's up to Councilmember, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilmember Mang, how she feels and, you know, right.
So I'll, let me just comment quickly before she, uh. So, the agenda was listed for performance review. And I would agree that we didn't spend any time talking about performance per se. We ended up talking the majority of the time about the nuts and bolts of how a RFQ was going to go out to, you know, candidates. I think the way the minutes are written, it actually, actually accurately reflects. I mean, what, so it was agendized as a as a performance review. And it does reflect that we discussed sending out the request for proposal. I don't think we talked about much else of substance during that meeting other than the nuts and bolts of how the process was going to happen.
And I would agree with Councilmember Whitman that the minutes actually do reflect. And the question is, is broader, which was, actually, it's not what do the minutes reflect, but how was it agendized? And that's the real question, but that is not a question for the minutes, actually. The minutes, the minutes say what we did, we just. So, once again, I, I'm going to defer to, we can, we can, right, so there's no changing the minutes because that is what happened. There are other, other discussions we could have about the agendizing of the meeting and whether or not that was proper. And, you know, I am working with with Ms. Anderson to figure out ways that we can have guardrails at each step of the way. Whether it's before we go into closed session so that the public is aware of certain things, not what we're going to discuss or how we're going to discuss it, but things that are not prejudicial against the city, that, that do not put the city at, at a disadvantage, which is also the standard. The standard is not if you are, you know, having a litigation, whether or not there is initiation of litigation. The standard is, would discussion of that publicly disadvantage the city? And that's very different than we have litigation, you know. So anyway, but that's a discussion, I just wanted to let you know that I have been working on this, trying to figure out where these guardrails and at what point these guardrails can be put into place where the entire council can agree or deliberate and vote.
Well, I thought something was suggested last time. We haven't decided this yet, but the suggestion that I hope we do take up is that in our closed session, if somebody is uncomfortable with something, they bring it up right then, and we do regular check-ins. That sounds like a very good practice, it's something I want to do. This could have happened then if somebody was uncomfortable, but. So, I'm, I guess my question now is to move through this now, instead of having that big closed session conversation is, do we feel comfortable with the minutes as is? Do we feel something needs to change?
I guess I'm willing, you know, to have that there, and then, you know, reading what Mr. Harvey reported after it covers what we discussed in the meeting. So, I guess there is, you know, accuracy there.
Okay.
And, and I can point out that there will be minutes from this meeting where this was discussed. That hopefully, you know, we probably will represent correctly what this discussion was, so that it becomes referential in its own way.
I just will jump in on that. This, we will not capture this conversation in a way that is going to be easily transcribed when you, when you look at the minutes from this meeting, but you can go and watch it online.
Thank you.
We do action minutes.
Yes, and we can, we can, once again, when those minutes come up, we can say that these aren't, that these minutes don't accurately reflect, we would like it to be these two sentences instead of those two sentences. We have the ability to do that. I realize that the videotape is the official record. But, they're usually four hours long.
I know, I'm just pointing out that our, our minutes are action minutes. So if somebody's looking for a, a blow-by-blow of a conversation, they're never going to find it in our minutes because we don't do that.
Okay, and, and we, I think we've taken enough.
Okay, so then.
So if Kim, if, if Councilmember Mang is satisfied, okay, thank you.
Is there any other items on the consent calendar that anybody wants to question or pull? Then do I have a motion to accept the consent calendar? Oh, there's one public comment, thank, oh man, doing great. Mr. Steingold.
Indemnification analysis for $37,000? What is that? Are you analyzing the indemnification, all the clauses, or the one involving councilperson Rule, or why are we spending $37,000 to analyze indemnification? When it's either payer or don't payer? And go to war, one way or the other. Putting it succinctly.
We're not going to have question and answer, so you're making a rhetorical question?
No, through, okay, through the mayor, through the mayor to the city manager. What is an indemnification?
I don't want to do this right now, but that's something we can ask, we've accepted it on consent. Thank you, Mr. Steingold. Okay. Mr. Montgomery? Oh, oh, I'm asking Mr. Montgomery to call the vote.
No, oh, wait, no.
Okay.
Motion in a second.
Was there a motion in a second?
Are there public comments online?
Oh, and public comments online on consent, thank you.
There are currently no raised hands, Mayor.
Sorry. My mistake. And you have a motion to accept the consent calendar. Anyone? Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
A second. Mr. Montgomery?
Roll call. Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Councilmember Mang.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so now we'll move on to the public hearings. The design review permit for the Cabin Village, Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor. As we have done for the last couple meetings, I'm going to hand this over to the very capable Mr. Seibert. Uh, and a cast of seemingly thousands for this next presentation, so Mr. Seibert, please take it away.
It's been an army of individuals working on this to bring this forward. So, good evening, my name is Lucas Seibert, I'm the Community Development Director for the city of Ojai. The item we have before you is the Cabin Village, which is a permanent supportive housing project located at 408 South Signal Street. PowerPoint, thank you. Next slide, please. So from an overview standpoint, I think it's important that we kind of do some belt suspenders, just to kind of set the table for the discussion. I know really kind of the focus for tonight is the DMA or the Development Management Agreement, as well as the Phase Two, and the information that came forward on that, so we'll talk about both of those, but let's set the table for everything else. As an overview, the applicant is the city of Ojai, that's basically all employees that have been involved in this. Myself, Brian, Ben, as well as Legal. We've also got the proposed developer, which is Dignity Moves, a nonprofit. There are a number of individuals that have been involved in, in that process as well. And included in that is the architect Dylan Johnson, who will be speaking tonight, as well as Kathy Nolan for landscape. And then the civil engineer has been Caitlin Bush, who brought forward some, some really critical and important information regarding the engineering pieces and grading. From a recommendation standpoint, we're looking at three different pieces. The first is to approve the proposed Lower Public Works Yard. The second is to adopt a resolution, which is Attachment A to the staff report that's before you tonight. Within that includes the SEQA, the DMA or the Development Management Agreement, and that is approving the sole source development and the developer as Dignity Moves, a California nonprofit corporation. And then the development of the project, or the Cabin Village project, and approving the design review permit, or DRP 24-006 for the project. And lastly, is the authorizing or authorization for the city manager to execute the Development Management Agreement, so basically giving him authorization to ink it. Next slide, please. As I had said before, kind of a belt and suspenders approach to this, the site conditions as they exist. Here you can see highlighted in the yellow is the site itself, sandwiched between Ventura Street as well as Montgomery Street. The existing use is the Lower Public Works Yard. The zoning and general plan, land use designations are consistent as public. Lot size is approximately 1.74 acres in size. And the surrounding uses to the north include vacant parcels, which are mixed use, and are highest zoning as it relates to multifamily. To the west and to the south is single-family residential. To the east is the remaining public works, maintenance and facility offices, either to the east and to the northeast. Next slide, please. Here, I'll actually turn it over to representatives for Dignity Moves, I think we're going to have Joanne. Kind of an overview of, of what they do and what they bring to the table.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Joanne Price, I'm co-founder and Chief Real Estate Officer with Dignity Moves. We were a nonprofit startup that was born out of the pandemic, and we specifically focus on unsheltered homelessness. That's the most visible, that's the most inhumane, and we believe that it's the most easily solved. What we realized is it actually costs twice as much to leave somebody on the street. And by concentrating on innovative solutions, we could build at a fraction of the cost and a fraction of the time to bring people in with rapid deployed, cost-effective structures at a fraction of the cost and time it typically takes to build housing. So known for our innovation, we also passed legislation to help facilitate the construction of these communities. And we, in response, we've used a range of solutions to build. It's not just modular, we use prefabricated structures. We've also resorted to using plastic, like where we're saving the plastic bottles out of the sea and we're turning it into plastic. And we're turning it into permanent housing. And these are the solutions that end up costing typically half the cost of, the average cost of housing in California is $650,000. We're building at half of that, and sometimes like one-tenth of the cost of a million-dollar units in some of the high-cost areas like Silicon Valley and Los Angeles. So before, then we were at council, in that time, when I was last speaking, we have opened 200 units. And that's in under 12 months, and all those units came in at less than $100,000. And what that's, that's on top of the 500 units we've already opened, there's already served thousands of people. And what we're discussing here today is a great solution for the city of Ojai, because what we found is every jurisdiction that we go into has unique needs. And they have a finite amount of resources. So we worked diligently with the city teams, with the, you know, the county, the city, to find the resources that can build a project that's appropriate to the neighborhood, to the city that we're moving in. And that sometimes takes a long time, I think we've been at this for over a year, which is great, because we really want to understand the community, understand your needs, understand your concerns, and respond to those concerns, and make sure that we can complete this project to the, your expectations.
Thank you, Joanne. Uh, next slide, please. So this is one of the two pieces that we're really looking to, to talk about and kind of unpack tonight. The first is what we're referring to as the DMA or the Development Management Agreement. And the deal points here are highlighted in, I want to say 10 points. The construction budget is, been identified as $9.5 million. Within that $9.5 million is the management fee of $500,000, which has been earmarked. Dignity Moves initially receives through this, cutting a check basically for $5.9 million. City approval required for each invoice thereafter. That could be on a monthly basis, that could be on a quarterly basis, but it does require certain parameters to be met for that. Budget and schedule, both of those pieces are not included within the DMA at this point, but are required to be provided by or before August 30th of this year. Once those are received by staff, it will be brought forward to this body for review and consideration. Dignity Moves is contracting as a competitive bid, city council to affirm contractor selection. What that means is, instead of selecting it in-house privately, it is being an open-source competitive bid process, brought before this body for final consideration. From a design standpoint, there's been lots of discussion, and in the coming slides, we'll, we'll see the hacienda style. That has been baked into this Development Management Agreement, as well as the floor plan and general understanding of the design features that we're, we've been seeing and that the, the planning commission considered as well. Across, uh, progress meetings, as this project moves forward, regular project meeting updates and reporting were required by Dignity Moves and the builder itself. And staff would be involved in that to ensure that we're, that they're moving forward in a timeline that, from a scheduling completion date, is by July 30th of 2027. There's a requirement from a technical standpoint of general liability insurance. Here we're identifying a $1 million per incident or $2 million aggregate, and there's an umbrella coverage of $5 million. Upon construction completion, there's been a clause identified that any unused grant funds will be returned to the city. So basically, there'll be a housekeeping effort from a financial standpoint at the end. Any, any residual money from that 9.5 will be returned to the city. Next slide, please. From a Phase Two standpoint, is Andy on?
Yes, we have Andy Nelson on.
Okay. I'm going to just generally speak to this, but I'm going to have Andy also, Andy's with Rincon. He oversaw this, these efforts and provided us with, I would say, some pretty technical advice. He oversaw this, these efforts and provided us with, I would say, some pretty technical advice in terms of how to proceed. But as you recall, when we met in March, we identified that there was an area, which is RB6, which is highlighted here in red. I've highlighted it even further by giving a red dot around it as a dash line. The red dot is the RB6 boring. That's where we saw the initial lead exceedances found at the five-foot level. At that point, in talking with Rincon, they felt the best strategy to kind of get an understanding is to do additional borings in each cardinal direction, which is what you're seeing here in the kind of blue color. In addition to that, they re-drilled the initial RB6 and went down as far as 10 feet. So, there's a three to five, and then there's as far as, as deep as 10 feet. Now, within that, those areas, the result of that was that not all four areas came up with exceedance of lead. In fact, it was three of the five, the north, the east, and the west stepouts had exceedances, which kind of gave us an understanding that the area is more confined to the north than it is to the south. I'd like to have Andy, if he could, kind of speak to the why we went into that direction and kind of the, the process that we're going through right now with the Department of Toxic Substance Control.
Yep, sure. Yeah, that was a pretty good summary. So, we, with, with the additional assessment, what we were intending to do was just get a better handle on the extent of the lead impact. So, we had the five different borings, one in the original location, and then four step-out borings. We went a little bit deeper to see if we can get the vertical extent. So, we wanted to see the bottom of the contamination, but also we wanted to see how far out in each direction it would go. That's a typical way of doing a stepwise fashion in an assessment like this. You first get an initial detection, then you step out from there, and you want to get the extent of it by doing additional step-out borings. So, the findings that we got back, like was stated, the lead impacts are really limited in extent. It's between three and five feet below ground, and it doesn't seem like it goes to the south very far. And we have borings to the, to the west that have defined that extent. And then also to the north, it seems like we've got a boring that does have a detection, but then the next boring farther to the north does not. So, at this point, we've got enough data that we've got the extent delineated to the point that we know that if we could go out there and just excavate the soil, we can remove it. And that's probably the quickest and easiest way to remediate this. And, and we're gonna have the DTSC provide oversight. We've had conversations with them where they can give us a no further action letter. Once that soil is excavated out and we have confirmation samples showing that nothing is left in place, they'll give us a no further action letter, and at that point, the site is clear for development.
Thank you, Andy. And just to, just to clarify, Andy's been, been critical in this. We've been working with, and when I say we, I mean, we've got staff also working closely with Andy and his team with the Department of Toxic and Substance Control to ensure that we kind of all understand the next steps throughout this process. And I believe we actually have formally submitted the, the paperwork and information to, to get this process started. So, we are working forward and diligently, but also carefully, making sure we're following the process. So, with that, next slide, please.
Oh, before we do that, I, I do have a question only because, can we go back?
Sure. Let's go back one slide.
And, and maybe Andy can answer. What are the greenish, what are the teal dots? What are the red dots? And what are the black dots on that?
The red, the red dots are our initial assessment when we first went out there. And we collected the samples down to five feet throughout the site in different areas, sort of targeting where we would think that there might be contamination based on what we were seeing. There's some debris out there. There's, we just wanted a good coverage of the site. So, those are those initial borings. The black ones are from a stockpile of soil that's on site. So, those, those two black locations, we targeted pesticides, herbicides, because that stockpile is sort of from, from an unknown source. Different projects throughout the city might bring soil and stockpile it there. So, we sampled those and tested for a couple of different things than the rest of the samples on site. Once we got those results, we had that detection of lead in RB6. So, the bluish, the teal borings, that's the second round of soil sampling that we did. We came back out in April. We, we did four borings in each direction of RB6, and we did one boring right next to RB6. So, it's two different phases of fieldwork, the first one and then the second one.
Is now a time when I can ask a clarifying question about, about this, on this, on this piece, yes?
How, does that feel okay? Okay.
Okay, okay. I can wait if it's, so I actually had a question on page two of 97, Exhibit B of the ERF. There, it, so it says that, there's one line here that I just wanted some clarification on. It's program funds should not be expended on site restoration. Remediation is not restoration. Is that correct? Or is the, so if, if we, I just want to make sure that we have budget, that we have it within the budget or that we can include it in the RF, ERF grant to do any kind of remediation.
Assuming that the city council decides to move forward, yes, we will include that within our revised budget request application to HCD. We're intending to be reimbursed for that effort.
Thank you. Because it's, as I was reading this, it looked like the, that particular line, site restoration, had more to do with taking an existing structure and restoring it.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify.
Good clarification. Yeah, please. Or did you have more to say?
Um, yeah, I did have one question, and I'm going back into my mind, but we were going to do 10 new borings. Is that correct? Do I remember that correctly?
That's for Mr. Nelson or Mr. Seibert?
No, I don't remember saying 10 borings.
10 feet?
It was 10 feet, okay.
I think it might have been 10 feet.
Yep, that, that might be where you confused.
No, that's, yeah.
You know, I mean.
Ask everything.
Yeah.
Well, here, here's what I think is important. I think, I do remember having that conversation before council and saying, look, there's a number of different ways we could approach this. Going deeper is one of the approaches, and I, I do recall having a conversation. I don't remember the 10-piece specifically, but the depth of 10 feet is where we ended up landing.
Okay. And we ended up landing and doing the four new borings within the sphere of influence of the red dot.
But exceeded, yeah.
Yeah, okay, great. That, that clarifies it for me. Thank you very much.
Yes, please.
Okay, I have one more question. Is, so, I'm just trying to visualize where the structures are going to be built on the property in relation to the lead. Is, so, is there going to be a building right above that? Is that part of the garden? What, what is, what is that?
So, the area in question there is, is really the sidewalk slash parking lot.
Okay.
Is what we're looking at. It's, it's a combination between the two. It's kind of slicing, kind of in the middle there.
Great. So, there won't be someone sleeping right on top of that area, in other words?
Right. So, and I, and I would also identify, while, when Brian and Ben and I were walking, and Andy were walking through the different types of scenarios, the four cardinal directions seemed like the most logical. I mean, Andy talked about a bunch of different variations that we could do. But we've, I mean, initially in my head, I was like, oh, is this in the middle of the lead site that we're looking at, or is it on the edge? And he said, look, the easiest way in which to do that is to do four cardinal directions, and that way you kind of get an understanding. So, coming back with lead exceedances within the north, east, and west areas made us understand that we're kind of on the southern end of it versus on the northern end, which was encouraging to hear. So, then that had them go even at a, at a, at a further depth to understand how deep it goes at that point. So, that's, that was kind of the rationale that we went through. I mean, Andy went through a couple of different scenarios that we could be looking at, but this one seemed like the most plausible one, given what we were presented with.
I, I think the other important thing to add here is even if there was a sleeping structure right over that location with the work that we are doing in this, in the oversight and the sign-up we are receiving, it's safe. That's the important thing to know. We're doing this under supervision from DTSC. This is the recommendation, and everyone feels confident and comfortable that this is going to safely remove this naturally occurring lead.
So, I just have a question. So, if the contaminated soil is removed and they find no further action, is there some sort of a certificate or something issued so in the event down the road, somebody gets lead poisoning and they can't come back to say?
Great question. Andy, can you respond to that in terms of the Department of Toxic Substance Controls?
And as you respond, explain what a NOFA is, and that's really the certification.
Right, yeah. So, at the end of this project, once that soil is excavated out, we are going to be collecting confirmation soil samples from the sidewalls of the excavation and the bottom. And that's gonna show that there are no more impacts left behind. We're gonna submit that report to the DTSC. The DTSC is gonna review it. In addition to our company providing the conclusion that all that soil's been removed, the DTSC is gonna give their own internal review, and they're gonna give that no further action letter. The no further action letter is a legal document that states they agree with our findings and conclusions. There are no remaining health impacts or risks to the environment from the concentrations of lead at the site. So, at that point, yeah, that serves as your legal document saying that you do not have to do any additional corrective action. There's no more health risk, there's no more environmental risks.
Great question.
Uh, just to.
Yeah, sure.
Just to follow up on Councilmember Mang's question, which is, and this is probably more for Matt. So, I understand the concept, if we got a clearance, no one's gonna say we were negligent in allowing the construction to go forward, but that doesn't really end the inquiry about whether someone can pursue the city for damages if they claim they received lead poisoning as a result of living on the property.
The challenge they'd have to prove is causation. They'd have to be able to prove that we, that the facility after the cleanup still had enough lead to create an unhealthful level, a poisonous level, and that would be a really difficult holtaro. There's no guarantees that someone won't sue us in the future. That doesn't exist.
Yeah.
But the clearance from DTSC after having completed it, so it's not just a document, but it's hard work on the ground to clean it up before anybody moves in, will give us as good protection as we can get.
We've, we've reduced our risk of being sued, but we haven't eliminated the possibility of being sued.
And there is no way to eliminate the possibility of being sued. This is America. Everyone can sue anyone at any time for any reason. The difference is, can we win the case? Do we have a good defense? And if we've done everything needed to get a DTSC clearance, then we'll be able to win. We have a good defense.
That would be true of any construction project, is the scenario, it sounds like.
Just one more question. So, getting that no further action needed, when you remove the soil, I know it can't all be removed, so what's the scope, what's the percentage that, do you go, if 80 is the acceptable, do you take it down to where it's 70, you know what I mean, the testing? What degree will it be approved at?
To, to Councilmember's Mang's question, could I also add in the sidewall studies that you'll be doing and the scraping? Could you just speak to that? I know you talked to us about it, but I want to kind of hear for all, for the entire audience here, what the process looks like, and then what levels you're looking at, making sure it's below in order for it to be safe.
Yep, yeah. So, we have a handheld instrument when we're out in the field and we're doing excavations that involve metals. It's called an XRF, an X-ray fluorescent handheld device, and that can give you measurements in the field of what those concentrations are. We use that as a screening tool. So, we will be chasing the contamination. So, we'll have a company come out with an excavator, and they could dig out where we know it is already. And then we can take sidewall measurements with that XRF. If we need, if, if it's above 80, which is that residential level, then we will continue to step out and chase it until we get down below 80. Now, we might be more conservative in the field because we want to make sure we get it all. So, we haven't set a concentration yet for what we're gonna be using in the field. But our goal is to get those concentrations down below that residential level. So, we'll chase it in the field. We'll collect our samples that we send off to the lab. The lab is the final say in whether or not we got it all, because their, their instruments are way more precise than our handheld instrument. Once we get those sample results back, and it is below 80, and we've done enough sampling, and the DTSC concurs with that, then that's when we're done.
Thank you. And if I could add one more key there, is it's an iterative process with DTSC. So, it won't just be our staff making the decision. Of course, our staff have the expertise to do so, but it's in consultation with DTSC. Have we got out enough as they make each next dig? Okay. Please.
All right.
Thanks for being flexible.
Thank you, Andy. All right, next slide from the Phase Two additional borings. All right. Here is the site plan for the proposed Cabin Village. 30 units, parking on site. So, just as a, as a refresher, the information I'm providing here is no different than what was presented in March. I'm just kind of giving you a refresher from, from the meeting in March. So, in addition to that, we have eight onsite parking spaces. We do have onsite bicycle parking, which will include charging for those bicycles, and we have storage onsite. The courtyard, which is that hacienda piece you're seeing here, kind of centrally located. And then to the bottom left are those solar panels. As, as an identification piece, you can see the, the roof plan there as well. The red outline that you're seeing there, and then kind of a line that goes to the center of that driveway, that's really the, the fire department's turnaround. They call it a hammerhead. I think we're all kind of familiar with that. And that's the area that they would need in order to make a safe turn to go up in the event of an emergency. To the right or to the north of, of that area is a storage area, as well as a pet relief area. And then beyond that is the switchbacks that you're seeing for ADA accessibility that then daylights out to South Ventura Street. It's kind of the basics of the site plan itself. We're gonna dive into the floor plan, as well as the elevations, and I think I'll have, next slide, please. I'll have Dylan come up and kind of speak to, to those, as well as the, as a project architect.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you. I'm Dylan Johnson. I'm the architect working with Dignity Moves. Lucas actually described the building quite well, and I'm sure you're familiar from the prior meetings, but it's 30 units, 28 single units and two double units. The idea is that this layout is very repetitive and flexible in the future. If units needed to be changed from double to single or vice versa, it wouldn't be that difficult to do. North in this drawing is to the left, so the entry is, is on the left side of the page here. And the north wing of the building is really two sort of administrative and community spaces. With the one on the right, so that's on the east side, is the, the dining and gathering space for the residents. There's seating for, I believe we have it at 40 now, food storage and warming kitchen facility. So, not everyone is cooking with, with appliances, but warming, gathering, dining, and a place for the residents to enjoy meals together. On the, on the left side, or the, the west side of the entry wing of the building, so on the bottom of the page there is the administrative suite, a communal laundry room, and so we, and then another mechanical and storage room there. The three offices you see include a security office, a check-in entry space, and support services offices as well. The courtyard is really the, the centerpiece of this project. I think many of us are familiar with this sort of mission-style hacienda-style building typology. It works really wonderfully for bringing people together and fostering a sense of community. All the units have their own restrooms, so residents can enjoy their own private space, but then have this shared community space in the courtyard and the dining hall. The drawing to the lower left is just a blow-up of the single units, if you want to look carefully at each of the, the features that we're including. It's a bed, a desk, a small fridge, and a full bathroom with a small closet as well. Uh, yeah, make, next slide, please, for the elevation. Maybe, next slide.
Next slide, please.
Thank you.
There we go. So, the elevation's again, working with very familiar architectural styles and typology. Uh, so the elevations, again, working with um, very familiar um, architectural styles and typologies here in Ojai. Uh, white stucco uh, and a clay-like tile roof, we're working um, on exactly the specs for those as we speak. But um, a building that will really just fit in with the fabric of Ojai quite, quite seamlessly. Um, it's also important to note that this site is surrounded by um, a, a dense coverage of oak trees on, on really all sides. So it, it actually isn't visible from, from really anywhere outside of the project site itself. But um, as you approach it from below or from the pedestrian uh, walkway coming off Ventura Street, um, you'll, you'll be looking down on, on a sort of a classically Ojai mission style building. Um, simple, you know, consistent window patterns. Um, since our last planning commission meeting, and these are the same elevations you saw at the last city council meeting, but uh, we added windows to the bathrooms, so there's daylight on both sides of the units. Um, the, the, the second drawing from the top there is the section looking east, so that's an interior elevation of the courtyard. You can see the glazed units into each unit. Um, and then the lower two elevations are the perimeter, the, the sort of darker uh, brown squares sitting on the ground are, are screened mechanical units for, for each of the units. Um, but in the end, a very, a very simple understated building that's respectful of the, the budget that we have and also the traditional architectural character of the neighborhood we're building in.
Perfect. Dylan, could you speak a little bit about the fire hardening measures that, that you guys are already starting to think about?
Yes, um, as we all know, we're in a high fire severity zone here, so this building will meet all the requirements for the wild urban interland interface. Um, so non-combustible materials on the exterior being the key piece, it's a fully sprinkled building, sprinkled as a commercial building, not a single family residence. Um, and you know, Class A rated roofs, non-combustible siding, no small pieces of wood, et cetera. And the landscape is the bigger piece, uh, the earlier conversation. Um, Kathy Nolan's done a great job of drought resistant, fire resistant landscape planning that takes into account the different uh, zones, defensible sta- space zones around the building itself.
Alright Dylan, thank you.
Thank you.
Next slide please. So that segues into Kathy, if Kathy's online. Yes? Kathy, if you-
Hi, Lucas.
Hi Kathy. If you could speak to um, the landscaping piece here and um, I know we talked a lot about uh, the courtyard area. If we could talk about the courtyard area a little bit and the, kind of the fire hardening pieces that you've been um, working through as well, from a landscaping standpoint.
Sure, so yeah, I'll start with the courtyard, um, and I'm really excited about this space. I, I really see it as an extended uh, you know, living quarters for all the residents. And um, one of the things that I, I tried to do was to not only make it communal, but also there's a little degree of, of what I would call separation between what I would call like a kind of an outdoor dining, then a seating, and then a vegetable garden or raised bed area, and then a lawn area. So a large group could gather there, but also someone could come out on their own if they wanted to sit and, you know, be semi-quiet or alone, could have that space too. So I really tried to emphasize that with the design and the layout. Um, we're also using, once again, um, hopefully a permeable uh, paver for the dining and the seating area. Um, we know that uh, a lot of the residents of Tent Town, right, a good handful of them like to garden. It's, and also to say this for myself, it's very therapeutic and grounding, so we are including raised bed beds. I'm not going to specify what goes in them, other than I, I will have to figure out some numbers for the um, modified water efficient landscape ordinance, but whether they decide to use vegetables or perennials or whatever. But it's, they can make it their own is what I'm trying to say with that. Um, and let's see, and there, we do have a lawn area. Um, I'm specifying a lawn that would be kind of medium to lower water use. Um, but at the same time, because there's thirty units and they're going to be sharing this space, I think it's really vital to have something cooling, a place where you know, you could sit, you could take a nap, you could do yoga, tai chi or something like that. So it's multifunctional, I do want to point out that some of the residents have pets or, you know, dogs. And we have provided outside of the courtyard area, up in the, the area opposite the parking lot where we have the um, bike racks, the trash and uh, storage, a separate, what we were calling a pet relief area. So that's separate. And then um, as far as the plant material on the inside, I would say it's more of a perin- um, a Mediterranean low water use palette, because we do have a center tree and then just a minimal amount of low shrubs, it'll be like a maximum three feet to give a little separation on the boundaries of the um, this courtyard space. Um, and then, you know, of course, the challenge, we're, we're dealing with fire. So the tree that I selected is not a California native, but I just, there wasn't one appropriate for the space, for the size. So it happens to be a non-fruting olive, which is considered like a medium sized tree, low water use, but will provide some shade. Um, and then I'll go, now I'm going to move out to the exterior of the building. And it may be a little hard to see, but I would like to point out, as Dylan did, we have a lot of existing oaks on this property, which is great. It not only provides screening for the building, but um, it really um, is a natural setting and very um, what do we say, in context what, with what you would see on Creek Road or Lower Ventura Street. Um, we will be doing a, a minor amount of maybe a little clearing, uh, pruning, and that's really more for fire safety. And of course, we had an arborist report included, I'm not sure if we're going to get to that page, but we do have an arborist report and recommendations and what have you. So we will be um, of course complying with that or abiding by. And then um, Lucas, you had mentioned the um, fire safe feature, which we, which I have done on the uh, concept plans, but will continue to pursue and, and develop with the construction documents. So basically, I'll just quickly say that, you know, there are several zones, starting with zero zone. Zero zone is five feet out from any building. And um, the fire department actually discourages planting there, or you can do planting, but you have to meet certain guidelines about the height, the width of the plant material, um, how high it's going to be under a window, um, the flammability, there are some, you know, recommended lists that we're using. Um, so there, in a few places, we do have a little bit of plant material near some of the buildings, it's more of the service building, but we're complying with the, the zero zone. Um, in addition, in that zone, there is no um, flammable mulch allowed. So you can do bare soil, you can use gravel or decomposed granite, but something that's not flammable. And then going out from there, we go to the thirty foot zone, and then after the thirty foot, you, you go out to a hundred foot zone. I happen to have those shown on the plan, it's probably a little hard to see it, um, you know, in this context. But um, once again, we are using uh, California natives, compatible with the oaks, low water use. And it is a little challenging to meet the fire code using the natives, but once again, I've gone in, I've gone into the list, uh, looked at the height, the width and the spacing between the plants, uh, pretty much avoiding being under the canopies of the oaks. You don't want to irrigate under there as is, because these trees are existing and haven't been irrigated. So I'm really, you know, honoring those oaks, being very mindful of the fire, and then at the same time, wanting it to be beautiful and low maintenance. Um, I, I guess that would be it. Oh, I do want to mention too, uh, Lucas, I'm not sure if there's any more slides after this with landscape, um, but I could mention that the mitigation trees um, that we were using on the ADA ramp area going up to Ventura Street.
There are no more slides, this is your one slide.
Okay, alright, and I'll just make it quick.
But Kathy, I, I do have one question for you, just as a clarification piece, because I know this is a question that came up in, in the March meeting, and that is, or maybe a comment. Uh, there's an, an understanding within the community that apparently grass is no longer allowed, but because of the M-Wilo standards and the equations that you apply to ensure that you're meeting and under the thresholds for the maximum water allowed for the site, can you kind of just explain why, in this case, landscaping, um, and more importantly, the grass as a low water grass is being allowed here?
Right, so basically with the M-Wilo, you at, you, you turn in calculations from the project, it's, you know, on a state database. And basically, you will get a number back that is your maximum allowable amount of water that you can irrigate with on the project. And if you don't do it, you will, you know, won't get certified. So you basically, you have to meet, meet those numbers or come in under. Um, and so basically, they don't say you, you cannot have a lawn, even a high water use lawn, but you're only allowed a certain amount of water. And if you can design your plant material in irrigation, the irrigation has to be compatible and meet those numbers, then yes, you can have a lawn. So now when I get into design development and construction documents, I'm going to start doing pre-cals. And who knows, I might have to adjust my lawn size. But the rest of my landscape is all low water. So after years of experience, I'm pretty sure I'm pretty darn close, but if I have to adjust it, I will. And just to meet, you know, the allowable uh, amount of water I can have. Do that, I hope that explained it, you know, fairly easily.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you Kathy.
Okay.
Alright, um, next slide please. So in addition to everything that we've talked about tonight, there's also the California Environmental Quality Act. And within that, we've identified three exemptions that have been included within the resolution as a part of Attachment A. And I'm highlighting these, but they're, they're in much more and greater detail within the uh, resolution itself. But we talk about infill development projects, which is a Class thirty-two exemption. Um, there's also the housing projects of units of one hundred or less as affordable or low income uh, households. And that is really Section twenty-one, one fifty-nine point two-three, as well as Section fifteen, one ninety-four. And then the last one is the, is one that was recently um, brought online, uh, I believe in January first of this year, which was, is now within the Public Resources Code, which is twenty-one, zero, eight, zero point one, which necessitates the actions taken by the city to approve a contract to provide services for people experiencing homelessness. Those are our three exemptions that we're seeing as clear um, as clear exemptions qualifying for this project. Moving on to the next slide please. Oh, and I should also note, you don't have to go back to the, to the previous slide, but I should also note that within that are supporting technical documents, um, bio, traffic, noise. All of those have been identified within the previous rep- report that we brought forward to this body in March. Um, now, the last piece that I want to, to mention, then we'll go on to the recommendations as well as next steps, is there was a letter that was produced and provided by um, HCD as a support letter. And really, it highlights six different points um, within the letter itself. The letter itself has been attached as a part of the agenda report as the last attachment. Um, and in addition to that, it, it speaks to the project being consistent with the city's housing element. And it goes into detail identifying disapproval may conflict with the city's commitments within the element. So there's many commitments that we've, we provided to either through policy, goals, or even programs. We have nineteen different programs that are built into the housing element, and there could be some discrepancies in terms of what um, are identified within our certified housing element um, in, in conjunction with what this project is bringing forward. The second piece is it meets the Housing Element's laws definition of supportive housing. The shitty, the city should treat, sorry.
No worries.
Should treat the project as a use by right. So within that, there is, there is actually a program, Program Six, which speaks to um, facilities as it relates to affordable housing development, and more specifically, the supportive housing um, piece as well. The third bullet talks about the city's duty to comply with affirmative, affirmatively furthering Fair Housing Act, or the AFFH, which mandates public agencies take action to address disparities in housing and access to opportunities. Now, you might be asking yourself, what is the fair, what is this affirmative furthering Fair Housing Act? And really what it is, is it's the fair housing for all, regardless of race, religion, sex, marital status, status, and sister, and s- and sis- ancestry. Sorry, it's my Midwest slang here. National origin, color, dis- uh, disabilities and other um, other protected characteristics. Uh, creating inclusive communities for all, really that's, that's, that's it in a nutshell. Um, in addition to that is Point Four, which is the city's duty to comply with the anti-discrimination land use laws, denying housing for low-income people, some with disabilities. When similar projects have been approved, it may be discre- uh, discriminatory and violate um, the law. We already have projects that are twenty-plus years old that we have approved and are built and existing within the community, um, which is already showing a roadmap for um, similar, similar sort, sorts. The fifth bullet talks about prior PL zone uses, um, ample justification for approval is what's identified within the letter itself. And as a part of that discussion is about four different sites, uh, kind of sprinkled throughout the community, um, both including mixed use as well as, as multifamily. And then lastly is, is that one of the points that's, that's driving home this effort, which is denying this project could jeopardize the ERF, ERF award and may result in HCD enforcement actions against the city. And it, and it highlights that within the letter itself. So with that, I'd move on to the second to the last slide. And that's the recommendation, so I'm reaffirming the recommendations thus before this council tonight. One is approving the proposed, the first action is approving the proposed lower public works yard as a location for the Cabin Village project. The second is adopting the resolution, which is Attachment A to this staff report, determining the project is exempt from CEQA, as was highlighted earlier, um, and outlined and approved the sole source development management agreement with Dignity Moves, a California nonprofit corporation for development of the Cabin Village project, and approve the design review permit DRP twenty-four, zero, zero, six. And lastly, is authorizing the city manager to ink the deal for the development management agreement with Dignity Moves. Those are the recommendations, I'd also like to just touch on next steps if this was to move forward tonight. So last slide, and then we can open it up for questions. So from a next step standpoint, um, I think it's important to just identify some of the key points that have already been either discussed or um, that are important to note. One is that the project budget and schedule will be brought before this city council after the August thirtieth deadline. Um, that would be before this body to consider and review. The second is Dignity Moves contracting competitive bid uh, will be brought before the city council to affirm the contractor that would be selected. And then the last is the Department of Toxic Substance Control updates. Those would come in as, as deemed necessary, and then the soils removal and disposal is also a part of that process as well. So all three of those things would be happening um, with the decision tonight. So with that, if there's any questions of, of council, I'm, I'm available as well as representatives of Dignity Moves and legal as well.
I just have one quick question, I'm sorry to go back to contaminated soil. But in the previous report, I remember, wasn't there arsenic as well? And it was that whole debacle and how he stated it was like a little bit, you know, it was contaminated, but so where's that?
There was, it was, so I'll, I'll let, I'll answer it, and if Andy, if I've, if I'm missing something here, please fill in the blank here. But I, I believe it's within the stockpile areas that were highlighted in the, in the two black dots. So those areas are already being removed regardless, but there's, there were samples taken there regardless.
So do we, were they included in the Phase Two soil test?
No, not with the Phase Two soils test, instead it focused on the RB six um, site and then the um, the cardinal directions that went beyond that. So the RB six was that area that we really focused on discussing, and then I had highlighted in that dashed area, that was the area of the contamination that was above the regulation of, Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, residential screening level of over eighty parts permeable. the regulation of, Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, or residential residential screen level of over eighty parts per million.
With lead, not arsenic.
Correct, with lead.
So, right. And so the the arsenic was all within naturally occurring background concentrations. So the the stockpile soil is getting taken off-site. But the arsenic concentrations that we saw in the rest of the site, which was was tested for arsenic and rest of the metals, they were all within naturally occurring background concentrations. So that's not a constituent that we would call a constituent of concern. Because you can't clean up what's already at background concentrations.
So just a quick question, DTC, DTSC? Anyway, DTSC, they would have no problem with the arsenic levels, basically? Is that um, correct?
Right, yeah, they're gonna get all the data. And so it's it's going to include arsenic. And we had a conversation with them already. We presented the data to them. And um, our company and the DTSC are both in agreement that's the lead impacts that need to be addressed and not arsenic.
Great, thank you.
But if I understood correctly, the two black dots were the soil that's going to be removed anyway, and that's where we did find a concern. So that's we, that's already underway. That's what I heard.
Correct.
Okay. That's good. Other questions for staff, please?
I have a a cou- a couple of questions around the budget. Uh, so the, we would initially be uh, contracting with Dignity Moves and the for five point nine million dollars, correct?
Well, actually, no.
The the initial part of that.
You're being asked to enter into a development management agreement with Dignity Moves. The first payment of five point nine million would go before June thirtieth.
That's what I meant. I'm sorry.
Sure.
Um, and do we have, uh, and but we we wouldn't get the actual budget until August thirtieth, correct?
That's correct.
Of the entire project or of that?
The budget of the project by the agreement, should you decide to approve it tonight, will not exceed nine point five million dollars. They will come back with the detail of that by August thirtieth.
And what is the initial five point nine million dollars?
Development costs.
Okay.
And that's pursuant to, you know, the ERF grant mandates that you spend at least fifty percent of your development um, costs before the June thirtieth deadline.
So we would be, we would be paying for development before we get the budget, before we get the the budget from the contractor?
Dignity Moves, and and I'm gonna allow Taylor to extrapolate on this one a little bit, how the mechanics would work. But they'd be essentially drawing down from that. And this was spoken to a little bit. And then after that period of time, then it's going to be a traditional invoice and receive payment. But maybe Ms. Anderson can can give some detail on that.
Yeah, so the after the in- initial five point nine million is sent to Dignity Moves, they're not allowed to pay any of their invoices until the city approves them. And the contract outlines a process for that. It also requires that any unspent funds, something were to happen, let's say, the ci- the city has the ability to con- cancel the contract if for some reason the budget and the timeline aren't um, delivered by August thirtieth. So let's say that happens, we would be able to get any unused funds back that the city hadn't approved in invoices. Um, as it's part of our agreement. So we've considered that. And then, uh, as Mr. Harvey said, it'll go to a traditional, city will approve the invoices, then make a wire, then they'll pay the invoices after that for the remainder um, of the became an attorney to not do math, so whatever. Nine point five minus the um, five point nine.
Question for Mr. Seibert. Um, I'm looking at page, or whoever's best to answer, two dash three. And it's below the bullet points. And it start, the paragraph begins, Dignity Moves is in the process of revising the current budget. It's the next, um, maybe the third sentence. The project design will remain consistent with the aesthetic design previously discussed in construction with a preference for natural and bio-based materials with low embedded carbon, et cetera. So I know that's something that came up in that intervening time between the last vote and now. So I guess the question is, whoever's best to respond. That's something that I know was expressed very much in in the public to want to have it be this style with these materials and all that. So how sincere or what kind of, what can we see? And if we don't see that, is that going to be some ground for us to say, this is not in the spirit of what we intended?
Yeah, so instead of, because I think you're you're getting at, how come it doesn't say cob and hay bale construction or some something more specific versus something a little bit more general?
Or or just that the commitment is there, that that would be presented to us that we could see, oh, this is in the spirit of what we were asking for.
Yeah, I think there's some flexibility in terms, because there could be alternative um, construction materials that still fit until to that's that kind of natural uh, line instead of being just stick construction. So it's giving them the latitude to to be creative instead of pigeonholing them into only one specific design style.
Yes.
But I'd I'd almost have Dylan or someone from Dignity Moves kind of speak to that as well, because I know that was a conversation we had.
And I think I think the question is um, not will it, you know, uh, will there be a variance in the buy in, you know, alternative building materials? But the idea is, what is the guarantee, not the guarantee boat, where's the commitment to use the alternative building uh, materials as opposed to the preference? The preference is is not as strong, I think, as we would like to see. Am I, am I understanding?
Oh, I'm asking for an expression of the commitment.
Yeah, right, right. Of of using alternative materials, not a specificity as to what alternative materials or biomaterials you might choose to use.
That's it.
Yeah, first, uh, I would like to thank you for asking this question. It's it's rare to be in front of a public body that's that's demanding the design team use these kinds of materials. So thank you. That's amazing. Um, to the whole community. But um, yeah, the commitment is very much there. I think Lucas said it well. Um, what we need to do now, because um, what we have today is a is a preliminary schematic design of this building with a number of ideas of a range of natural bio-based materials that that are very low embodied carbon, that store carbon instead of produce more carbon emissions. Um, but there's a, there's a huge range of what that could look like. And what we need to do as soon as we um, advance the project to the next stage is work with the community of builders, um, all of the engineers to understand which of those systems will fit the budget, fit the site, fit the units, the acoustics, all of these other technical attributes that are required. But um, but we are, we are, as a design team, I think as Dignity Moves, as city staff, we're all very committed to using one of these variety of systems that I I think you and the community will be quite happy with and very proud to be one of the first in the in the nation to use this kind of material for this type of project.
Thank you.
Yeah, I I.
I can go into more detail.
No, 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 I I I think we just want to reemphasize when, because it did bubble up at some point that we might be using manufactured materials. And that would have been a great disappointment to many, many, many of our um, you know, the people that we brought along, saying that we were going to lead and and be a leader in this. So we're, I'm glad to hear, and I did hear that Dignity Moves, that you guys were as opposed to, not opposed, but you know, willing to work as hard as possible and as hard as we would like you to work to make sure that those building materials were, you know, biomaterials, alternative materials. And we understand that there are, of course, a lot of um, wheel, there's, there's a lot of moving parts in this from acoustics to, you know, we understand that. So for sure. Thank you.
Yep. Do you want to speak on this subject or a different one? Because you wanted to go.
Yeah, okay.
So then as I understand it, the idea of doing prefab modular is now kind of off the table. We're gonna do a bio-based construction?
Yeah, I think there's a couple of issues there um, from a design standpoint. The prefab and modular is is typically more suited to smaller individual units. Um, as a function of the permanence of this building and the site. Um, frankly, the 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 lowest cost way to deliver thirty units is going to be a building that is built custom for this site. It fits very neatly between the oak trees and the hillside and so forth. Um, so I think we're in a world of site-built construction. Um, and then there's the question of what materials do you use for that site-built construction? And that's where uh, we're going to be engaging in in a pretty rigorous process of selecting the right um, kit of parts, if you will, um, working within that palette of natural materials.
Thank you.
So I have a handful of other questions. Um, the the comment was made earlier about uh, bringing in these types of projects for a hundred thousand per unit. So I'm having a hard time getting to the nine point five from thirty units.
Yeah, go ahead.
What I meant to, what I was explaining was every jurisdiction is different. And they have a finite number of resources. So certain jurisdictions, we can build for as low as a hundred thousand, and we built as high as four hundred thousand. It really depends on the program and the type of community we want to create. And in this case, it's the hacienda style. You've got bathrooms on those units. When we build for a hundred thousand or less, it's typically just the sleeping cabin with all the amenity spaces. But when we're talking about higher quality materials, larger units, these are at least a hundred and sixty square feet. They all have bathrooms. They all have like the aluminum windows. They have high-quality aesthetics. So we're going to be building these units for over three hundred thousand. That is still fifty percent of the average cost of building affordable housing in California. So it's still a great value for the city. And when I look at the numbers, your pick count, the unsheltered fifty-four. Your unsheltered pick count is fifty-four. Sixty percent of that number is thirty. And so we're building thirty PSH to replace the tent city or the tent town with high-quality housing that you're going to be proud of in this community. And I also want to add that the legislation that allows the service contracts to um, be exempt from SEQA, that was passed, part of the legislation we passed last year under SB thirteen ninety-five. So that facilitates everything that we do, the innovation. And the innovation of the materials, the bio-environmentally friendly, it's on par with the plastic buildings that we're building for permanent housing. So we're being innovative, not only in policy, but how we construct and the affordability of what we construct. So we can bring everybody indoors.
Thank you. You have more?
Yeah, um, so we started out applying for twenty units, a grant for twenty units. And then we were gonna go off of city property, purchase, purchase uh, property to cite it. And we, and in order to uh, show the state that we were doing something much greater so they'd permit us to move, we applied for thirty. But now we're back to city property. Have we looked at all at going back to a twenty-unit project?
So no, let me, let me just correct a little bit of what you you said, uh, council member. So the the initial application, which was approved, called for twenty units here using a rehabbed Kent Hall facility. And if we, we will need to submit a revised application to the state, assuming we get direction from the council tonight. And in doing that, the state has made it clear that you can submit a revised application to change what your initial application was. But if you do that, you're going to need to provide either more units or better proximity to services or both. Uh, you can't submit a revised application that provides less units or further proximity to services. Um, or is is identical, but in a, in a location that is more politically uh, appealing. And so that that is what we're 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 doing. It's not about whether the city owns it or not. It's it's the revised application will uh, provide more uh, units and arguably at the same distance to services.
Um, but have we looked into whether they would be perfectly happy with us doing the twenty we talked about when this whole process started?
So again, y- yes, we have. And that would not be, that you're not, so that falls into the category of you're not doing anything different than in your initial application. You're just picking a different location. And that they're not, you you could submit that, but the likelihood of them approving that is not high.
I was gonna, oh, go ahead. I'll ask after you.
Um, so I have a question uh, about the about the building use. So let's say hypothetically, the the state develops these incredible programs and 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 homelessness is not an issue anymore. Or worst-case scenario, we run out of funding, we can't get any support for maintaining it. Would it be correct in saying that we could, that we could use the building, that the building would be an asset that we could use for other purposes? That ideally it would remain a permanent housing structure, but that we could use it for office space, or we could use it for short-term housing for employees?
So I I guess I would answer that question, Mayor Protem, uh, with this. First of all, with the ERF grant and uh, the number that we talked about tonight for the development, nine point five million. The reason why that number is very important for the development is that allows two million dollars for future operating subsidies, which basically allows us up to four years. Assuming we don't receive any money from the county or any other source to assist with with permanent supportive housing. We've been told by the county and by other sources that once this project is created and you have permanent supportive housing, you are now eligible for funds that you're not eligible for now, because what you have now is just simply a sanctioned encampment. It's not a temporary shelter, is not permanent supportive housing, is simply the only sanctioned homeless encampment in Ventura County. And as such, is not eligible for any type of funding like that. So however, I think to get to the second part of your question, let's say homelessness is solved in in California, and we have no type of need for this type of housing down down the road somewhere. I would argue that you've built a um, a housing asset on city property that would have uses for a number of housing-related functions, you know, potentially. But I I don't, in my crystal ball, I don't see that happening anytime soon. And I see this as long-term permanent supportive housing for many, many years to come.
And I will add that the city in, by approving this project, is committing to fifty-five years of affordable housing at this site. So after that period was over, then you could explore something different than that. But for the time that those fifty-five years is passing, it would either need to remain permanent supportive housing or at least affordable.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Seibert, I had a question. Um, page two dash five, just something that I, the community had brought up before, and that is um, it's under the SEQA exemption in one part, but it's basically bringing up the idea, I'm looking at under class thirty-two category exemption. The subject is, the project is consistent with the general plan, land use designation for the project site and all applicable general plan policies, and is also consistent with zoning of the project site. And I'll jump ahead, that is substantially surrounded by urban uses. So just asking your thought process, what has been brought up in the community is what you generally have around there are single-family homes. And then you've got this, but you've got the this larger lot, but a more concentrated location. So help walk us through that.
It's it's a question that's, it came up during planning commission. I think it even came up in in the March meeting as well. So the way in which you can kind of understand the the PL zone or the the public quasi-public zone doesn't identify uh, permanent supportive housing as as an applied or a an allowed use. But our code has provisions in it that allow for findings of similar use. And once you make those findings of similar use, you treat that use as a permitted use. So what we've done here is identified that through the actions of the findings of similar use actions, which is four different points that have to be made and justified, which have been done fairly extensively within the documents that you're seeing here. Um, it also covers the zoning. It also covers general plan consistencies. It also covers similarities to other uses that are within that same um, zone. So it's treating it as if the use itself isn't allowed use moving forward within the PL zone or the P-zone, depending on if you're looking at land use versus zoning. Still consistent. Now, the urban use piece is an interesting piece because the the city itself is already urban, by the way, in which it's defined. So if you're looking at the sites to the west and to the south, single-family, sure, the density doesn't necessarily meet kind of the the thresholds of what we're looking at here. The P-zone or the PL-zone allows for flexibility in terms of how we address uh, density. There isn't an identification for, hey, within the P-zone, this is the density that you have to stay within. There's la- leverage and latitude uh, by both the planning commission and this body to to address that. And it's actually specified within the development standards as such. Lastly, is our highest density for multifamily is to the north. We already have a vacant lot, and then there's lots to the north of that, which are already developed. And that is at a uh, density of fifteen units to the acre. So you're looking at a fairly fifteen units to the acre. So you're looking at a fairly dense area to the north already. And then you're looking at an area to the east that's already public and being occupied and used in that fashion. So there's consistencies, at least on three, two of the, of the four sides. And it's been a discussion that I've had with the community at the planning commission level and then here.
No, thanks for saying it again.
And just kind of just rehashing it. I had a feeling it was gonna come up again. I saw it in some of the public comments again. It's kind of a reminder of, if we don't have that piece in there, then it's very difficult for us to, to, the only way in which you allow for other, other uses within a specific zone is to do a, basically a zoning amendment.
We, we had a letter, I think, from a couple of planning commissioners at the last meeting. And they, I think, if I understood the letter correctly, was that they thought they should have been asked to assess that density piece, but they were not. And they, and, and they were, I don't know, they thought maybe we should send it back to them for that density.
They were writing as individuals, correct?
They, they were writing as individuals, not as members of, of the commission. But they, I mean, obviously, it was two of the members of, of the planning commission. Density was certainly discussed. I don't know if it was to the level of, of their comfort level for them as individuals, as members of the planning commission, but it was certainly discussed. Analyzed to the level that they may have wanted it to be analyzed, maybe not. But it was certainly analyzed to the level that we're seeing within the, the documents that you're seeing here tonight.
And I will add, it was analyzed to the level that we put on any other project in the city for this, this type of similar use.
Yeah, similar uses of, a lot of cities, I would say, most cities, I can't think of a city that doesn't have this as a, as a tool. And I have a feeling that once cities grasped onto this, they thought, well, this is a much easier process to at least evaluate whether or not a use is, you know, kicking the tires or whether or not it's appropriate within that specific zone. Otherwise, you're doing a fairly cumbersome, you're doing a fairly cumbersome rezone or, or evaluation from a land use standpoint. And it's, it's discretionary, so.
Do we feel comfortable going to make one more question, please?
Yeah, um, thank you. I actually have two questions, but they're pretty quick. So we have, the, the city of Ojai has an urban designation. Is that what you, is that what I heard you say?
Yeah, it's my understanding that we have an urban designation through SEQA.
Okay, which means that basically anything that we were to build would be infill by definition? Is that correct? I'm just curious.
The infill piece, I believe so. I, I'd have to look a little bit closer at the SEQA piece.
Right, because I've never been able to figure out exactly what infill is. People will say, well, you know, there's empty lots on all sides, so how can it be infill?
Well, infill has specific.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's gotta be at least five acres or not more than five acres.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I get that. But I'm, I'm really worried, I, I'm not worried, but I'm curious. Not that we need to bring that, that up here, but like what really, when we talk about infill, are we talking about? Like, what are the standards and the criteria? I'd like to know at some point. Okay, I don't want to belabor the point. My last question is for the money people. When we give you five point nine million dollars, which I hope that we do, and it goes into a bank account, who gets the interest? Just curious.
That's a really great question because we, we've actually come across that on another project. This will be the third project where we accept the money to make sure that we meet the criteria of the grant. And the interest is actually put back into the project. So we open a separate bank account and all that information is shared with the city and each draw, project draw is approved by staff and then we release the money. So it's very transparent.
So, so that interest basically goes back into the project?
Yes.
It's like compounding interest in some way.
Yes, and anything left over will go back to the city.
Great question.
Very good.
Yes, Miss Lee.
Yeah, that was a great question. Thank you. So I, I have a question that I've been thinking about and would, one thing I would love to see us do is find a way to commemorate people who've been a part of this project, especially one who isn't with us any longer, Betsy Van Light. And so I'm wondering if there is a way that we can have a plaque or that we can include something for the core team who's really been, been with us, but especially for her.
I would second that.
That's pure council direction. You could certainly do that.
We could use the interest from the.
Yeah. Make the plaque. Or, you know, yeah, 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 the naming, the naming rights.
I love that idea.
Naming rights. That's a great idea.
And I think Ruth too.
I, I will, absolutely. I just want to plant a seed with you as well. Sometimes when you have projects like this, to encourage continuing donations, you also open up the opportunity for other community members to have naming rights for a certain area. So just, and we could come back with a proposal on all of that if you like, and I think it's a great idea. But that just opens the door for other individuals that may want to contribute who haven't been able to yet.
That was exactly my next, the next point that I wanted to make. Yes, let's, let's have a donor wall.
Oh, totally, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Bricks.
Uh huh.
All right. Do you have a question before you go? No, go ahead. Please.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have a lot of questions and I don't know, there's one, and I don't know, because I don't want to say anything to violate or anything, but it's to do with this. What is it? Like potential lawsuits. So I don't know what I can say, what I can do, because I definitely don't want to violate anything, but it's a big issue to me.
The public commenters have raised a number of past potential challenges against the project. So we'd be happy to answer any general questions on those.
Okay, I think mine would be more than general, because I've requested information that I haven't received.
Gotcha. So, yeah, I mean, I think that would be, the council could set a closed session to discuss the project further on a majority vote. Probably the best vehicle there.
Is one way of saying what you're asking is that we have heard from public comments and the public that there's concern from some by the project, and we've also received our letter from HCD. So I think we're basically saying, we know there's going to be some people unhappy with either direction.
It goes further than that.
Oh, okay. Well, at least we can say that. No, no, no. I mean, at least we can say that.
Deeper to, yeah.
Fair enough, fair enough.
I'm nervous to say, you know what I mean, because I don't want to say the wrong thing.
Well, isn't it fair enough to say, we certainly understand that litigation is a possibility either way?
Yes.
That seems certain, that it's a possibility.
And that's consistent with the various public comment. Veiled threats, direct threats, on-the-way-to-threats, all of the above we've received. We can expect that the project will likely be litigated no matter what decision the council makes. Once we have a council decision, then of course we handicap and strategize the defense, but we don't yet know what we're defending.
Do you feel comfortable with me going to public comments now?
Yeah, you go ahead.
Okay. Well, let's, I know people have been waiting. So let's start with Bill Miley, then Heidi Whitman, and then Ruth Miller.
Hello. With the final environmental phase two study report completed and mitigation plan, the next step, obviously, is the council approval of the development agreement with Dignity. But I have a quick question first. Will a bike racks be enclosed and locked and covered from the weather? Really important. So this is going to meet the state timeline for contract expenditures, which is really good. And I understand there's a completion date of July two thousand twenty-seven. I support the increase from twenty to thirty and support the management agreement signing. And I look forward to its inauguration. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Mr. Seibert, do you have a quick answer to the bike rack question or do you know that?
Dylan, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe we have a structure that would be able to house the bikes internal, but we also have racks on the outside. And then we also have the option for plugins as well for those that have electric bikes.
Yeah, I think in short, the stored, the interior of the storage building, which is in the vicinity of a thousand square feet, has not yet been designed. Bikes are one of the items that will likely be.
Understood. Thank you. I appreciate that.
So in terms of individual lockers?
Yeah.
Like sitting on their own? We haven't seen that. Instead, I think we're, we're looking at strategies within the existing or proposed structure.
Thank you. Heidi Whitman, Ruth Miller, and Anita Cram.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here specifically to talk about recommendation three. So my name's Heidi Whitman. I'm a resident of Ojai and I spent twenty years of my career managing six, seven, and eight-figure public works projects, including many, many state grants. I frankly cannot believe that any of you would consider approving a nine point five million dollar sole-sourced grant contract tonight without a budget or a schedule or performance milestones. You will have no leverage at the negotiating table if you do so. It's bad form and it's bad precedent. We've heard from a speaker from Dignity Moves tonight that they develop projects at a fraction of the cost and their prefab. And in fact, I looked up Santa Barbara's and they built thirty-two units and it came in at one point four million. I also heard the woman from, from Dignity Moves say, but that's not nice enough for Ojai. Well, at last Wednesday night's planning commission meeting, we heard all about the prefab units that Mr. Becker is putting in at Mallory Way and how great they are and all the reasons why he thinks it's a superior product. So I, I just don't get that, that it's not good enough. So the idea that the city will get money back is surprising to me. I have not ever heard that, especially when you just give someone money without any detail. Cities are not in the business of potentially overpaying contractors until they settle up later. And so I think approving the contract is premature, especially when, I mean, you don't even know the cost of soil remediation. While I appreciate that you're considering the cost and design of using some of these other materials, you don't know the cost of maintenance of those new structures, as well as the availability of qualified maintenance people to even perform the maintenance. So I think that it's appropriate for you to really, you can, you can approve whatever it is you want tonight, but I encourage you to take a look at the budget and really vote once you know what you're voting for. I did look at the November twenty twenty-four budget. It is so much different than what's being proposed tonight. And, and none of you even know what the money's going for. So please do not approve this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitman. Ruth Miller, Anita Cram, and Doug LeBar.
Good evening. I'm Ruth Miller. With unhoused task force, friend of the Cabin Village, and OTT onsite volunteer, I want to thank all of you for all the hard work. Lucas, you're amazing. Ben, you're phenomenal. You've all done so much already and really appreciate it. Obviously, I'm speaking in favor of approving Dignity Moves as a nonprofit developer for the Cabin Village. I'd like to give a little history. In the fall of twenty twenty-three, Mark Scott, Betsy Sticks, and a few others and I met with Jennifer Harkey, Program Director for Ventura County Continuum of Care. We shared our ideas for providing shelter for the unhoused in Ojai. Jen advised us that there was a state grant which was coming soon and suggested that the city apply for that grant. Once the grant opened, Mark Scott decided to look into it seriously because the city council had made addressing the unhoused situation in Ojai its number one priority in a workshop held previously. We were all concerned that there wasn't much time to submit the grant and express that to Jen. She assured us that since she had recently written a grant for Thousand Oaks, which had been successfully approved, that she could use the Thousand Oaks application as a template for Ojai. Dignity Moves was named in the Thousand Oaks grant application. Dignity Moves was and still is well-known to the state of California for its ability to perform. Jennifer Harkey at no time questioned them as a developer. In fact, she expressed that they were the best developer to be named in the grant application. Dignity Moves currently has a nonprofit GuideStar Platinum rating. If you don't know what that means, go to GuideStar and look. They have done three time-consuming test fits for Ojai already. They've been sensitive to the specifics of the planning commission and the city council design request. They have already spent untold hours working on the project location at the maintenance yard with no compensation to date. Ojai could not have asked for a better partner in developing a project which promises to house and offer supportive services for hundreds of Ojai unhoused for decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Anita Cram, Doug LeBar, and Leanna McNeely.
Good evening, everyone. I also would like to thank all the time and work that's been put in to this by staff, council members, mayor, everyone, the community. And I think the costs are just too high to leave people unhoused in a tent city on city property. A lot of resources have gone into this project. It just doesn't make sense to stop now. The invest, one thing I want to bring up that I haven't heard mentioned tonight, and that's the investment in solar. We all know this is a much more expensive way to go, but the long-term cost savings are worth it. And so I think, I think we're calculating in the solar and the cost of what this, the cost of the project. I also want to point out that Governor Newsom is starting to pressure communities to remove unhoused encampments in the state. And our federal government is much more of a loose cannon on this. So I think the future is very uncertain for anyone who is unhoused on what will happen. So there is a big risk with leaving the tent town on city property. And so let's just be a leader and go forward with this. I also would like to reiterate what Council Member Rule said about, I'd also like a good definition on infill. It's been used in a lot of projects for justification, and I really don't know what it means, but it's definitely being used as a justification. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cram. Doug LeBar, Leanna McNeely, and Bradley Smith.
Well, I don't know if this is, I read that there was, the location is going to be approved tonight as well. So my comment is, my first comment is about the location. At first, the community was asked to suggest a, a location. That didn't work out well as the commercial restaurant across the street was furious that the location was considered. Location for Cabin Village has been vetted by our own real estate professionals in town. They came up with several possible locations, but there was something wrong with all but one location, the Public Works Yard. There would be no location in the entire Ojai city that would not bring about objection to the choice. Ojai is living up to the reputation that no issue is too small for controversy. As far as the soil test, existing investigation of toxic substances in the soil revealed that instead of the limit of eighty for lead that they found at a depth of five feet, which is like that deep, they found number eighty-three at that depth. And that they will remove that in preliminary grading. All I can say is ooga booga. This is not something that requires us to evacuate all personnel from the area. I'm a general contractor. I know that to build, this is about the management agreement. I know that to build in conventionally today's world, one needs a budget for at least five hundred to five hundred and fifty dollars a square foot for absolute basic building. The proposed building is eleven thousand nine hundred and twelve square feet with an additional structure for storage and maintenance. Dignity Moves Dignity Moves, a nonprofit company, is expected to be paid $500,000 to manage the development. I would charge 15%, and I am way under what is commonly charged. The $500,000 is 5.5% of the estimated cost to develop the project. I support the location and the intention of the city to agree to the management agreement. And one other thing, I can see that the advance payment of $5,900,000 could possibly put into an escrow and paid out as needed. And that may serve as the necessary advance payment to the state.
Thank you, Mr. LaBar. Leanna McNeely and Bradley Smith.
Good evening, honorable council members, mayor, and the city administrators. Kudos once again to an amazing administrative report, very thorough, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Leanna McNeely and I'm a member of the Friends of the Cabin Village. I live in Ojai District Four, and my home is as close to the Public Works Yard as the two closest homes in Persimmon Hill. I strongly support the city of Ojai contracting with Dignity Moves to develop the cabin village in the Public Works Yard. I urge all council members to forego their pipe dreams of county financial investment at this stage of the project and to approve Dignity Moves as the developer. It's the only path forward that makes fiscal and humanitarian sense. And to date, I've heard no Plan B other than maintaining the costly status quo. If Ojai face plants on this project, neither the county nor the state will be a willing partner with the city that flushed $12.7 million down the drain. And why would they? Dignity Moves is a reliable partner, having successfully completed close to 20 ultra-low-income housing developments in California. Charity Navigator gives them the highest rating available to a nonprofit. The state of California views them favorably due to their reliability and commitment. And Dignity Moves has already invested considerable time, money, and effort for this project, to date all uncompensated. For a little history of these grants, the ERF grant and homestead grants were awarded in cycles. Ojai was awarded their grant in the third cycle of the ERF cycle. Prior to that, two developers, Shangri-La and Step Up, defaulted on their projects in seven communities across the state and are currently being sued by the state for $114 million. Given the facts just stated, if Ojai were to submit an unproven partner for this project, it is uncertain the state would approve the change. If the contract isn't approved, the project will not move forward. The tents will remain in the parking lot of City Hall for the long term at a great annual cost to the city and with no county or state money forthcoming for the encampment maintenance. Not a great financial decision and not a great look for increasingly Tony Town and not a humane solution and not conducive to the development of the proposed eight-acre campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McNeely. Bradley Smith.
It's cold back there. I had a great shirt to wear, you know? In color and everything. Council members, Mr. Harvey, councillor, mayor, mayor pro temp, Ms. Rule, Lucas, y'all did a great job, especially Mr. Harvey for kind of herding it, coming in late to the game. Lucas, you've been here the whole time. You put it together. You put on a good program. I'm in favor of going forward. I like the site. I think there's no reason for sequoia to be a problem. And you heard what my boss just said about Dignity Moves. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thanks. What, did I have another card?
Yes, Mayor, Renee Roth.
Renee Roth, please.
Good evening. It's very interesting to hear all the different input and to look at how far you've come and what the obstacles were to get to where you are today. So hurrah. I'm really glad to see this project at this point in the project. Just a couple of points that I wanted to make. And I do take Ms. Whitman's comments very seriously because I do think it's difficult to enter into a contract and hold somebody to their contractual obligations unless you've got some minimum specifications and standards that you can hold them to. Now, we know that they are going to be building to a high standard, and it's got to be a high fire resilient standard. So my questions are, like, what about dual-pane windows? I don't know if dual-pane windows were in there, but I know they're much more expensive. I know we had to go back and forth on the windows in the bathrooms and whether they should open or close. All of those little things have added up to what I think could be put into a preliminary document on what your minimum specifications are going forward so that when you, Mr. City Manager, have to negotiate this contract with them, you have a set of specifications that have been defined. And I know many of you know what those little nitpicky things are. One of them for me is also, is there going to be parking for a golf cart that's going to take people up and down? And is there going to be a place to park that little golf cart? Because I know there are going to be people who are needing to move groceries, people, stuff, up and down those hillsides. And those are going to be hillsides, switchback hillsides. So where's that parking going to be? There's little things like that that I really think should be in a development agreement. I think you've got a good company to work with. They've got a proven track record. I think this is all good. I just think you need to have something in your contract that you're working with or a couple of city council members who can work with you in that final agreement. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roth. Anything online, Mr. Montgomery?
Mayor, we have a raised hand from Terry. Terry, you have the floor. Terry, I'm giving you the option to unmute one more time here.
Oh.
Terry, this will be your last call. You have the ability to unmute. Terry, speaking to you, Zoom participant. There we go. I see you've unmuted. Please proceed. Terry, we cannot hear you. No audio coming. Mayor, there's no more raised hands on our item two.
Mr. Steingold, did you have a card in that I misplaced? Please come forward then. Thanks.
I assume this is going to get passed, so that's fine, which is good. No, no, it's a good thing. We need to do something, and that's important. Okay? We're taking care of our fellow Ohioans. To give, but I agree with Ms. Whitman, to give Dignity Moves 5.9 million upfront is alien to my world of 40 years in commercial real estate brokerage. Usually, it's held by the bank and it's given out. So that's one issue. The process itself, we need to have a postmortem because I don't think the real estate portion was obviously well-vetted. Things were obviously pointed in certain directions. But since we're going forward, I would hope that you direct Lindy Palmer to remove everything from the site once this vote is approved because we can't risk contaminating the site with an accident or intentional, whatever the reason is. You need to rope off the site because once it's blessed and no further action is given, which is a good thing, which is why we had to phase two in the first place, seven months late, but that's beside the point. I won't belabor that. But we really do need to clear the site so that there is no potential for oil drippings, hydraulic fluids, barrels of whatever, anything. The site has to be kept away from people and protected as of the vote tonight. And then we need to find a new place to park everything. And I don't know where that cost is coming from. Will the new Public Works Yard come out of the 9.5 million as a replacement? Or is it going to come out of our budget? So that's important. And going forward, I think we need to have a group look at all grants applied for going forward so that there aren't any, we understand predictable consequences of grants just being applied for and going, oh, we got you a million dollars. Yes, but we have to do this for the next 10 years. So keep up the good work, but please, the business development grant, I mean, we need a budget. I mean, to give somebody money and say, here, build it without a budget? I mean, where are the specifics, the details? Because that's where the problem is. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steingold. Do we have an answer to the question even preliminarily about where the Public Works Yard would be operating out of? It's still the northern part of the site, I presume?
Right. The Public Works Yard is not being relocated. There may be some minor uses that we have to look at other places to put them, but we're not needing to relocate the entire Public Works Yard.
Thank you. That's all the public comments. So obviously, people can say whatever they feel like saying. I want to suggest something, which is, at this, we've talked about this many times, so I want to suggest new information. So I know we tend to want to persuade each other when we voted other ways, so obviously, you could say what you like, but please, Ms. Rule.
I'd like to make a motion. Is that new enough information?
I'm hearing you loud and clear.
Okay.
I'll second it, but can I add a friendly amendment?
No, 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 hold on. Wait. Say it. Is it from the first page? Say it.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, you know.
We're hearing it now. Say the motion clearly, please.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I would like to accept the recommendations of one, two, and three.
Can I add a friendly amendment?
Absolutely.
To ask staff to come back with information on a donor plaque?
Okay. All right, so there's a motion and a second discussion.
Yeah, I have a few comments to make. So I am in favor of addressing homelessness and those who are unhoused, but I don't think that we've come up with the right solution for Ojai. We're embarking on a program that is the most expensive approach to addressing homelessness, and that benefits the fewest number of persons. So I'm all for putting a roof over the heads of our homeless and connecting them to the services that they need. The project being laid out creates a disproportionate burden on one neighborhood. We've got a general plan that says that in Ojai's vision, that the city and individual communities and neighborhoods need not abandon their local social values in pursuit of a greater regional good, and that no one group should have to accept the brunt of the impacts of a regional solution. And that's exactly what we're voting to do. We've got a neighborhood that is taking the entire burden of the valley, not just the city of Ojai. The entire valley, the unincorporated area of the valley represents about 75% of our population. And so, you know, I've talked about this before, that I would, you know, love to have been able to see a proposal that, you know, spreads how we address our housing of the homeless, you know, throughout the community so that we don't have one neighborhood taking on 30 homeless units. I can't support the idea that we'd be approving a contract without having the budget for the contract. I don't think that makes good business sense. I also think that we should have some type of a committee, probably with a couple of council people and some people from our community, that goes through and articulates what our criteria is, obviously within the confines of what the grant and the laws require. But I'm really not convinced that everybody who we're going to be hosting has any real connection to Ojai. And we've seen that here at the podium many times. So if another council member were interested in having such a committee, I think it would be a good addition. But I'm not going to vote yes, so I guess I'm not going to make that motion. And that's all my comments.
Ms. Man?
I agree with what Mr. Whitman had said. You know, when I decided to run as a council member, I chose my platform for transparency and fiscally responsible and all of that stuff. There's been questions I've asked from the beginning for budgets that I've never received. We've received some things that they were called a budget, but it wasn't. You know, seeing to proceed with a contract without dollar amounts, without anything, how much is Dignity Moves, how much is going to be on the city? How much money has been spent so far? We still have two years to pay for the people in the, you know, in Tent City while things are being built. It's just, there's things that have come up. We asked for transparency. I've, I don't feel that that's been honored. It causes issues with myself, with how I feel that things should be ran, that I think those need to be addressed. I've requested information, still waiting to get it. And to me, it just, you know, I believe in taking care of those, you know, the unhoused, the less fortunate, all of that. I think this could be a wonderful project if it was built on transparency. And like Mr. Whitman said, I think having community members involved is a wonderful thing. I know that you tried with your, you know, your community, whatever you want, town hall or whatever. In my, that wasn't what I thought it was going to be. I thought it was going to be council members with the community, bringing all their questions, all their issues, and hashing it out. It didn't appear to be that. You know, I still get lots of calls, questions, all that, which I'm sure we all do. But I just feel that, you know, it's a great thing for our community, but I feel that we haven't had the proper community involvement to make and information to make the best, the best choices for our city.
So I want to speak on a couple of things just in response. First of all, I agree that we need better community involvement and communication. And this is something that I've been advocating for from the beginning, and we had some setbacks with changes in leadership. And also, the person that we had serving that role, who was stepping into that role, sadly transitioned. She passed away. And so that was a real loss for the whole community and for this project, and we haven't been able to fill that role. So I'm definitely in support of more community communication, community involvement. I think staff has done a good job of putting things on the website, they frequently ask questions. You know, I also have concerns around not seeing a budget. But what Doug said is something that I keep coming back to when I think about that particular part of that, and that is that development projects, he, I thank you, Doug, for the exact numbers because the way that you framed that, that development costs 500 to $1,000 a square foot, and their $500,000 management fee is 5% of that. And so we don't have exact numbers, but on August 30th, we're going to have an exact budget. So we're, we have another pass. We have another round of looking at a budget in a way... We have another round of looking at a budget in a way that we see every single line item. And I would imagine that one of the reasons we don't have that budget right now is because they haven't worked on getting contractors. They, they are waiting for us to approve this in order to take the steps necessary to get those budget numbers. But they're going to put this out to bid, we're going to get contractors, and we're going to be able to, to solidify a more detailed budget. But it, it, it didn't make sense for them to go and do that before we approved it. Because then they're putting even more work into it without, without assurance from us. So, so and, and on August 30th, we have an option, again, of denying, of not moving forward with the project. If we don't like the budget. It doesn't make sense to do that, though. Or it doesn't make sense for us not to move forward because we still have a problem with, with our encampment. And we have to do something about that. And there isn't a plan B. No one has come forward with an alternative to this. We've had, we've had a lot of people voicing opposition, but no one has said, hey, here is another property, or here is another solution, or here is something else. And the grant that we received is contingent upon our partnership with Dignity Moves. As I believe Leanna said. The other develop, other low income developers or, or, you know, affordable developers, people addressing homelessness. They've, they've gone belly up. There's, there's no, there's no other organization that, that we have access to that can, that can come in with this kind of project and consider all of the things that they've considered, like noise mitigation, like communal spaces, like parking for e-bikes, like our require, our request of using biomaterials. They've worked with us so closely to meet our needs. And, and so I think in terms of leverage, our relationship is leverage. We've built a relationship over several years. And they're not trying to come and manipulate us. They're trying to actually do what we want them to do so that they can have a successful outcome, because all of us want a successful outcome. So I am very much in support of this, and I'll stop talking now.
I just, I, I, mine's very short. There's a, there's a 22-page development management agreement, and there's a 29-page resolution with many standards, and it doesn't have everything spelled out yet. And I thank you for reminding us. We will have this additional phase in August, and we can reject. And that's not what I suspect we will do, but I'm not feeling uncomfortable about proceeding. But give us the last word here.
Okay. I will try, I will, you know, try for closure here, but I did want, I loved the idea of that our relationship is leverage. And I do feel that. And I think it is, it is, it's intangible, but it's actually of greater value than, you know, words on a page in some ways. So, and I agree that, that, you know, there, that there are some, it's an amorphous financial situation. But I, I do believe that we do have a lot of things in place. One thing, I did have one question, though. I mean, are, 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 when they come back with a budget, can we say no? I mean, let's say they hit the parameter of the amount of money. So I'm, I'm, I'm a little confused about that. We're saying, here's a contract. The condition is you come back to us with a buildable budget for 9.5. Do we really have the option to say, well, you know, we don't like that budget?
I'm going to add, Ms. Anderson, answer, but the budget needs to be consistent with what is provided for within the development management agreement. And so it's going to have to be consistent with the design that was vetted by the planning commission or reviewed by the city council. It's going to have to be consistent with the cap that we've established for the entire project. It's going to have to consider, excuse me, it's going to be consistent with the materials that they have committed to using in the project and the features that are in the project. It's going to provide the granularity that you need to see so you can understand where the expenditures are going to be. Including, you know, this is how much it's going to cost per unit. This is what it's going to cost for the common areas, et cetera, et cetera. Ms. Anderson, you want to elaborate there?
So after the August 30th deadline comes, if, before that time, we can terminate the agreement without cause if they don't deliver the budget. Actually, that's not, I said that wrong.
Yeah.
If they don't deliver the budget and the timeline to the city's satisfaction, we can cancel the contract. After that, we, we have to cancel it for cause and give them 15 days' notice. So you would have to have a good reason within the agreement of why we are pulling out of the agreement.
If, okay, but that's only if we, if we enter into an agreement with them on August 30th. Or I guess my question is, they hit all of those, all of those criteria, right? They did, yep, 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 yep. Do we still have the option to say no?
At that point, no. If they've delivered a budget that's consistent with the development management agreement, no. That, that is not an option to deny the contract.
Okay, that was my question. So basically, this isn't like, you know, we have yet another chance. We are saying to them, this is what we need from you. If you give us this, then we move forward. That is what this vote is about.
Yes, and I would like to emphasize too, the reason, the reason that we're in this situation is because we've asked to cut them, asked them to cut the budget by a fairly substantial amount to ensure that there's a sufficient amount of grant money for the operations and a contingency. So we put them in this position to ensure that the budget fell within a certain number. And what they are doing is reworking the budget that they had orig, they produced a budget, right? We're trying to get the number down to keep it under 9.5.
I'm going to say it a little bit differently. There's, there's a cap. And then, and so the ERF grant, you know, it's carved up with this approach. The project itself can cost no more than 9.5 million, because then we also need 2 million for future operating subsidies, $500,000 for the city's own contingency, and then $700,000 for expenditures that we've already made towards a project like the soils testing, like St. Francis Challenge, that are grant reimbursable. And so that's, that's how we ended up here. Also, keep in mind, this is a completely unconventional grant and process. It's not normal that you receive the money upfront in total without having to deliver on milestones. It's not, it's not a normal process. Remember also.
I will second that for Mr. Harvey. That's very weird that they mailed us the check.
By statute, by statute, we have to make at least a 50% payment to the developer. So that's not something that we can negotiate. That is by statute. And, and that's why we're doing that. And then lastly, we spent a considerable amount of time, you know, not only talking about the location, but then the project itself. So, you know, with a traditional public works project, you know, you, you, you know, create the project, you put out a notice of bid, you accept the lowest responsible bidder. And this is not that process. And, and that's our normal process. We understand that it's confusing, but it's completely different than that process.
Well, and to correct something, to spend the 50% is a deliverable that we're expected to do under the contract, not by statute.
So I just, no, let's have, because if we're, we're basically, we have a motion in a second. And so if there's any more conversation around the motion, let's have it.
Yes, so I get, so if Dignity Moves, they come back in August with their budget, their timeline, all of that stuff. When can you produce a budget? What's been spent so far? What it's going to cost for, you know, if we're responsible for the soil, all the things that we're responsible as a city to see those numbers? So if it goes above and beyond as a community, we can decide where we want to pull money, from what account, what fund or whatever, to make it successful.
So what we could do is, as part of that effort, we can, again, we have the $700,000 set aside for expenditures already made, eligible expenditures already made towards the project. And we can show how much we've drawn down from that thus far.
Break down with everything.
We can, we can, we can show that, but it's going to be, it's not going to be expenditures for OTT. It's very limited expenditures for OTT.
So where does that money, that money came from the general plan?
That's right, general fund.
Okay, so, and so can we see that as well? I know it's different, but it's good to look at the whole picture.
We could bring back a separate item, if you like, that just shows all the money we've spent on OTT. You'd have to decide what time period you're talking about.
Because I know that I requested, you know, when I wanted information on finances, didn't get it. So then I requested, sorry, Weston, the year of warrants, to go through everything, but they weren't identified, so it was like.
So we, we could, staff could go through the effort to, and this has been an ongoing process to identify all the expenditures made towards OTT. We could do that, we could bring that back if that's the will of the council, we'd be happy to do that.
And Kathy, you have, since you've been here, thank you, because things are more drawn out so you can read an item and see.
Well, so, and I would say too, some, I've seen some of the records that were provided to you, and they are more for financial people, right? So I think it would be helpful if maybe they were translated into a format that was a lot easier to digest.
Right, and I've said, yeah, to have that, and then, you know, everything, oh, well, that's reimbursable. Well, that's fine, another column. You know what I mean? It doesn't have to be anything, it's just simple numbers.
I think that this, if I could jump in, so yeah, you made a request for expenditures, like Ms. Anderson's pointing out. This is a request, a council request for a detailed accounting and a report of it. And we could do that, but that's a council, council request, we'd be happy to do.
Thank you. I think it's important.
Absolutely.
Is that something that we're free to do as it wasn't really on the agenda, or is it close enough?
I think it's related, in my opinion.
It's close enough, because it's about, yeah.
I, I support that as well, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're accepting that as a friendly?
Yes.
We're accepting that as a friendly.
So staff to return back with accounting for Cabin Village and the OTT?
I'm going to call it something different than an accounting. It's going to be a detailed, it will include an accounting, but it's going to be a narrative of the expenditures and, and a description. And just so it's a, it's a, it's an understandable narrative that explains the amount of money that has been spent since OTT became OTT. We'll have to land on a date of when we consider it officially OTT. Early '24 is roughly probably when. I think we can, that's probably, that, so, yeah, starting some granularity, Weston, please capture that because.
So what I have is return, so the motion is to accept the recommendation, return with info on a donor plaque, for staff to return with, for info with a donor plaque, and to return with a detailed narrative of expenditures for OTT, likely beginning in 2024?
And Cabin Village.
And for Cabin Village, okay.
To date.
Right, the eligible reimbursements so far.
That just brings one more question.
Sure.
Okay, so when we get all of this information and we're looking at it, what if what's been spent so far takes us out of the grant money once we paid for, you know, Dignity Moves and all of that? You know what I mean? You can't back it, right? You can't.
What, what's the question?
So, so we give Dignity Moves there, save $10 million to make things easy.
9.5, it will not exceed that.
Right, okay, so, but then with the money that we've spent, the money it's going to cost us to continue what we're doing until the, the units are built.
You're talking about OTT?
Yes.
Okay, and so the bulk majority of OTT expenditures are not reimbursable.
Okay, so looking at these numbers, having those, if it takes us, you know, so far over what our grant money is, what if we decide like, oh, my gosh, can, could it be an option to say, no, we have to put the brakes, we have to come up with something else? Because where are we going to pull this money from?
So I, I'm not sure I understand entirely, but I think what you're saying is, let's say, well, we, we.
Let's say everything adds up and we've, it's $15 million.
It's not clear to me that that's possible. Because we haven't spent enough on Cabin Village pre-work to get near the grant level, is I think the issue.
And there's a contingency.
It's not possible to achieve that level.
So we, we, we've carved out $700,000 of the 12.7 million for eligible reimbursed expenses. So it's going to be $150,000 for St. Francis Challenge. We have a high likelihood that that would be reimbursed. It's going to be the soils testing effort, $100,000 roughly all in for that. There will be some other expenditures, but I expect that that 700,000 might be consumed by half, maybe, but definitely not more than that.
And, and just to, just to add on here, essentially, there are, there are things that are reimbursable, and there are things that are not. And the things that are not will never go into the grant. So we're, the only thing that would equal 12.7 or 3, whatever, would be things that are reimbursable. I mean, there's, there's a certain amount that's not.
Right, so the real simple breakdown is 12.7 million minus 9.5 million, which is to Dignity Moves, minus 2 million, which is for future operating subsidies set aside, minus $700,000 for eligible expenditures, minus 500,000 unmarked for contingencies not anticipated with the project. That's, that's the.
And all the ineligible expense, all the ineligible costs are right here in the ERF grant, page 11 of 25.
Right, and then those are, those are expenses.
Things like expensive things, like OTT security, that's not going to be something.
General fund.
I believe Mark Scott in the beginning put in $200,000, if I recall what you guys voted on before. I mean, that was before the grant was even received, I believe.
So when you, so the platform. So when you approve your budget for the next fiscal year, there will be an, an account for OTT that we will make sure it reflects as best we can what it's going to cost to operate it for the next fiscal year. And our finance director is right there, and she's nodding her head.
Okay. So I will, I'd like to add one other future report, which is, you know, a report on what are expected expenses in operating what I would assume is an adult residential facility. And a plan for insulating our liability.
So the first one, we already did. But what's the second one you'd make?
I'm not sure I understand the second one.
A plan for insulating liability.
Insulating liability against suits brought by.
The city paying for somebody who's injured as a resident of, of the, it's not, won't be Cabin Village anymore, will it? It's fine, up and up.
I mean, unless we rename it for Ms. Van Light or someone else, it'd be Cabin Village until renamed. So we would, we can put together appropriate waiver agreements for the future residents, although there's a chief of state law that limits that to an extent. Most of that is honestly covered by buying good insurance. We buy robust insurance to shift the risk of any future liability from the city's general fund to our insurers.
Yeah, well, I think we should also look at finding another operator, hopefully a nonprofit, have them operate it under some type of an agreement.
Rather than operated by the city. That's something that could be linked into with majority direction. We can certainly explore that. I'm interested in that. So, so let's call a vote.
Okay.
Mr. Montgomery.
I have the motion understood. I would like to ask Assistant City Attorney Anderson to repeat how well, well she stated before.
I have to turn the page a couple of times. Okay, so it's to accept the recommendation and return, for staff to return with information on a donor plaque, and to return with a detailed narrative of eligible reimbursements and expenditures for OTT in Cabin Village, beginning roughly about 2024.
Ball call. Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
No.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember May.
No.
Motion passes three to two.
We'll take a 10-minute break.
Yeah, please.
Welcome back. We'll move on to item number three, finance and budget committee recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna turn this over to Ms. Billings, our interim finance director, when she's ready.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, we are here to discuss the budget and finance committee recommendations. We brought this back to you earlier in April and we were asked to bring it back again with staff recommendations. The staff is recommend, recommendation is that the committee be comprised of staff and council members and no community members based on experience with prior committees and based on what is going on and the other community, surrounding communities in our area. And given the items that we, that would be discussed, the city budget, the city audit, the city finances, it's just my recommendation that it's moves smoother and easier with the committee formed with internal staff. So that's my recommendation and I'm open to discussion.
Questions for, for staff? Cause I'm ready to move to some public comments and then we can discuss. Okay. Sounds good. So I'll start with the public comments. I have Jeffrey Starkweather, Bill Miley and Larry Steingold. And then Brian Akins.
Thank you. I'm frankly kind of appalled by this. We have the city staff deciding to exclude the public because they think it's too technical for the public to understand it. When who on our city council has technical knowledge in any of these others? And you all have to make these final decisions. I don't think Mr. Gilman or Kim May would meet that standard. Not that, you know, if anybody would meet, it was one of the applicants, which was Clay Creasy, who's a CPA and has run major corporations, has a CFO, excuse me. Why is the staff to try and to change what a city council created, which was included citizens on the committee? Now, they focus on one thing, investment decisions. Well, this committee covers a lot more than investment decisions. It talks about review short and long-term financial information of the city and their finances as assigned by the city council, debt issuance, new programs in excess of 250,000, one-time financial projects. So, you know, citizens, there's plenty of knowledgeable citizens, I hear from them all the time, and have concerns about the debt that we've gotten into, how we're spending money, where people are finding money all the time, which didn't appear to be there before. And why sometimes we're like, we're spending so much money on electrifying buildings and we're spending nothing on fire prevention? I mean, these are major issues and the citizens ultimately are responsible for this. I think having citizens on that committee are critical. Economic development. Excuse me. We have a chamber of commerce that would more, know more about economic development than any of the staff on the city, who, most of them are brand new here. There are a lot of people in this town that know a lot about economic development and that is something that beyond the staff, it's a, and economic development also is a citizen, public policy decision-making. So I think this is a really terrible idea. I actually checked on citizen advisory budget committees. The Institute of Government has the whole thing. There are tons of cities that have those as well. And I would say if we, if you decide to knock these citizens off, then I'll get with a bunch of citizens and we will put a referendum on the ballot to have a citizens advisory budget committee that would be made up strictly of citizens and all the, the staff and city council people would be advisors to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Starkweather. Bill Miley, Larry Steingold and Brian Akins.
Hello. I'm aware that many cities do not appoint public members to their finance and budget committees. I don't know why. Seems troubling. There are Brown Act committees and they're public meeting. The past committees of our city have had citizens. Transparency is very important. But, so what are some reasons for not having public members? Well, you have less general public input, so you don't have to consider it. You have less knowledgeable members participating. You have fewer questions asked. There would be less need to bring public members up to date because they wouldn't be there. Elected officials may or may not have skills and knowledge. That might be a problem. It gives the members who are there more influence. It gives the hired staff more influence. Now, what would be the purpose of having members? You get random viewpoints from the community that you won't get otherwise. The city staff will have less influence because there will be public members there. The committee will have at least three to four members in addition to the two additional public members. Now, there's no risk of the public dominating the vote. Elected members bring their own elected district points of view, somewhat narrow maybe. Appointed citizens likely will have a larger, more expansive viewpoint. Public members need to meet knowledge and experience criteria before being appointed. That's a real key part of it all. Assuming the public members believe in good democratic government, they're advocating for full transparency about how money is spent is valuable. There's little downside in having public viewpoint and insight in the city budgets and their management. It increases the input of randomly selected citizens having a viewpoint on the committee. In summary, I do not see any significant downside replacing residents, citizens on the city budget and finance committee with criteria for their application. It may make the meetings longer, but the details are important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Larry Steingold and Brian Akins.
Larry Steingold. First, I'm not as eloquent as Jeffrey, your bill, probably definitely less tactful. But this not having public members on the board, on the committee is egregious. When they said the staff doesn't recommend and not personal, it's the city manager not recommending because unless he takes a vote of all the staff members and makes it democratic, he's directing the ship. And whether it's Ben or some other person, it's the city manager. All right? Why would they want more oversight? God forbid, anybody should ask a question. They want limits, but he proposed a quarter of a million dollars at a minimum. You can look at anything over 250. Can't look at 50. God forbid, you should look at five 50s and watch the money go sideways. Who's asking questions? The public has a right to see where the money's going, where the money is coming from and who's watching the boat? Who's watching it? All right? And that's great. Okay? But we need to have people on the board. These are your constituents. I'm a constituent. We need to have this oversight participation. You want involvement of the public, the voters, the taxpayers. It's our money. It's your money. Can I throw your money away without you watching? No, of course not. You want somebody, you wanna watch where it's going. You wanna be able to ask questions. You know, what does that mean? What is this? How's that happening? This is not a big deal. It takes also some of the onus off of you about being only responsible and listening to the staff. They produce the numbers. I hate to tell you, with what's going on, it could be smoke and mirrors. You may not have a clue what's there until after the fact, until you look at the vault and the money's gone. Haven't seen it. Where'd it go? Who knows? Insurance companies, somebody's pocket. So please have public members and lower the threshold to 50 grand so that people can go, what is that 50 for? Or if you see 100 checks going to somebody for 40. Or if you see 100 checks going to somebody for $49.99, there's something wrong because people are sliding it under. No disrespect to the staff, but that's how things happen. All right? So please, public members on the board, on the commission. Ignore staff. They're the ones who spend the money. Right? They're the ones who write up the budget. They're the ones who pay the bills. They're the ones who get the money coming in. It's like the hen, you know, fox guarding the hen house, right? So please, and no disrespect, I mean, that's what happens. So please, public members on the board.
Thank you, Mr. Stengel. Brian Akins.
Hello, everyone. Glad to be here tonight. I'm exchanging texts with our chair on our HPC. She's keeping me awake in the front row while watching carefully. So happy to be here. I am a, I am a retired chief financial officer. I was 15 years with aerospace company. Took a break to go off to an egg chemical company. Changed from that off to an architectural engineering corporation. And so dealing with all this. I fully support the different items that Bill Miley outlined. I think I have been coming to the budget committee meetings since the museum came to the city and asked for support from them in order to keep our doors open. And so I've been looking at the budgets, monitoring the budgets, going through the budgets. I'm actually one of the people that enjoy budgets just to see what people are thinking along that lines. But I do, I do think going along with what Mr. Miley said, there are people that are out there that bring in the citizen, the resident opinions. Mr. Creasy and Ms. Roth. Mr. Creasy, as was mened, mentioned, has extensive background. And for Ms. Roth, she is, brings the common person in, the person that's involved in the community over and over and over again, who knows, has a sense of what the community wants and what's the community needs. And so two great people, I think, that have volunteered. But again, I would support bringing in that public participation. They're the ones that are sitting out there watching you online and going, ah, you know, if I could only talk to them. And this is their method of doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Akins. Anything online, Mr. Montgomery?
Yes, Mayor, we have two raised hands. First, we'll have Terry, followed by Starchild. Terry, you have the ability to unmute. We did have some difficulties earlier, so I hope you're able to. Terry, speaking to you, Zoom participant, please unmute. You have the ability to speak. Terry, Zoom participant, I'm giving you one more chance here. You have the ability to unmute before we move on. And we will move on. Next, we will have, pardon me, one moment. Next, we will have Starchild. Starchild, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Weston. Thank you, Weston. I share my neighbor's dismay and a little bit of outrage regarding this staff recommendation to remove citizens from the financial and budget committee. I heard interim financial director, Ms. Billings, say that this is an attempt to make things smoother and easier. I suggest that we should have policy that makes Ojai better and more transparent. I understand that many of the neighboring cities don't have citizen participation. How many of those citi- how many of those cities have gone through three city directors, city managers in less than three years? How many of them have a financial director who was fired for cause and assistant city manager who is indicted for embezzlement? When I read through Clay Creasy's public comment, I'm struck at his expertise and how much he's already done for our city. We remember that this city parked the $12 million it got from the state in a no-interest bank account costing over 50 thou- some $50,000 a month in lost interest. That's more money per month than Carl Alameda is accused of embezzling. We need more oversight on the finance committee, whether that makes things harder or less smooth. And I feel for interim finance director, Billings, who had to present this report. But I wonder, was it her report alone? Or is it the city manager really, who believes that we should have no citizen participation and that we should have less transparency and not more? Finally, when I saw Mr. Creasy's written comment, I saw that he says that he criticized the city and then was taken off of consideration for the finance committee. I think that if that's true, it's very chilling. It's very egregious. And I don't think that citizens should have negative impacts from whistleblowing or trying to make the city a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Starchild.
That's all, Mayor.
Okay. Yes.
I guess I'm going to start. I am in full support of community members being on the finance, on the finance and budget committee. I know that we pulled this off of consent, and there was a suggestion that we go down to one member rather than two. I would like to make a case, not only that we have public participation, but that we have two members. And I'd like to be specific about this. As I know both of the applicants very well, Clay Creasy is a CFO and has been for almost 20 years. There is nothing about a budget that he does not understand. There is no discrepancy that he does not see. And there's no limit to the amount of work that he's willing to do to bring that forward. So there, he's, you couldn't hire a better consultant, quite honestly. That having been said, he is coming from the corporate world. And so there is a difference between municipal finance and corporations, just as there is a difference between a city manager who is the CEO of a municipal corporation versus a CEO of a normal corporation, stockholders, you know, profit, things like that. I don't think that there will be any problem with Mr. Creasy making that adjustment. But we do also have Renee Roth, who has experience as a municipal finance, and she can speak to that. The, the resume that we have looks like it might have been put in for the green, for the, for another position on the energy committee. But she has worked in municipal finance for, for a very long time. And I think that that also brings a really important voice into this. She and Mr. Creasy have met. They have discussed, you know, these kinds of things. They get along very well. I see them as complementing each other. And as we know, Ms. Roth has gotten up many times and spoken about the budget. Ms. Roth has sent many emails about the budget. She was in constant contact with Carl Alameda about the questions around the budget. And that's because she's a concerned, involved citizen. The other thing that Ms. Roth brings, which I think is really important, is institutional knowledge. We have an interim finance director who is interim and will be leaving. We have a city manager who is new. You know, who knows about Measure C? Who knows about, you know, the, the general reserve policies? And, and it goes on and on, the depth of what institutional knowledge would bring. And we don't have that. We have no one in finance right now who has that deep institutional knowledge, as well as being an active member of, of the, of the public who has chosen to participate in very deep and important ways. So for that reason, I really think it's important that we have at least two members. As I recall, the last time this came up, it was in fact, I think it was council member Whitman who recommended the second member of that committee, of this budget committee. So I would say that it makes no sense to have no public input in this. And I think, as you and I discussed, it's a matter of having, being at the table. It's not just a matter of showing up and having your three minutes to make comments. But it's a matter of being at the table and the public's right to have oversight on their money in a way that puts them at the table, doesn't put them at the three-minute. So anyway, my time is running out, but I would, I fully support and the two public members at this point, both Clay Creasy and Renee Roth, both of whom have spoken together and understand each other's positions around municipal finance.
If I, real quick, seems to me, I do agree that there should be public members. And I think we should make our decision not based on the two applicants we have, but in general and principle, which is fine. I don't think you would object to that. But I do have, there's two things I was hoping to add, which I mentioned last time we brought this up. The first is, it, it seems to me, if I remember correctly, that the former budget committee, the reason why, or a reason why it became problematic was that there were, there were citizen members of the budget committee who were, they did not favor council policy. So it became a way to try to circumvent or change policy. And so what I would suggest is that, that the, we receive these applications. And what I would love to do is have maybe Ms. Billings with two, you know, some small committee that just does a bit of an interview with council people. I would love to have that conversation to say, when I look at the, the items in the task, that's the part that I would like to avoid. And so even when we hear comments like, we're spending too much money here and not enough money here, that's policy. That's not quite a budget committee that's looking at how these programs are being spent or making sure it's being spent efficiently. And I do think that Item C, that's on page, attachment A, page two of three. When we start seeing the duties, that's under section, it starts on page three of four. There's like four-page numbers on each page. Section four duties, and when you see Item C, to advise on economic development matters such as methods to improve the business climate, how to better work with local businesses and recommend specific areas. That's so vague to me as to weigh down a whole budget committee around basically policy. So that, what I would love to suggest is, I do think that there should be two resident members. I would love there to be an interview part of the process so the expectations are clear. And I would, I would question, I guess, C a bit. Now, I'm just, that's a suggestion, but I would love to hear what other people think. Ms. Lang?
Yes, so I'm in support of, of having community members as well. And I understand the reasons, the reasons that you've outlined for not having them. But I think this community is unique in that we have such engaged, we have such engaged community members and, and people who come here and who are really invested in what happens here. And Clay and Renee are two of those people. And I agree with, with the mayor's assessment that we don't want to make this decision just about those two individuals, that we want to make it in its own right. However, before I, before I vote for it, I wanted to also ask the two members of the two council members on the committee. We heard from the mayor and, and council member Meng. I just wanted to, to see, to, to see what your perspective is.
Yeah, I'm for, you know, I know, I know Ms. Roth. I don't know her, you know, well. I know Mr. Creasy. He's been a huge help to me because I'll be the first one to admit that I do girl math. He has broken it down, you know, eloquently. He's come with me to meetings with Mr. Harvey with issues, pointing them out. He's always professional, smart, all of that. I think, you know, he, like Leslie said, that he does work with Renee. And if, if that works, I think it's fine. I do want to just bring up too, I know when, Kristy, when you first came and I reached out to you to say, you know, what are you, what have you worked with or whatever, to see what's comfortable for you? And I noticed that this list here, it was listed, but we did speak, Camarillo, you said, had community members, but they had a bigger portfolio, a stock portfolio or something, and that's where the community members were involved? Was that, is that?
Yes. So in Camarillo, there are two committees. One is a finance committee, which is comprised of staff and council members, and one is an industry committee. And there are members that serve for oversight on that, uh, community members.
Okay, perfect. And I will say, I agree with, with Larry about lowering the threshold of the, what is it, 250 to bring it down lower? I think that's kind of, you know, with the change and everything that's going on, I think to be conservative, and we can always, it can always be adjusted. But I think start, start small and work up when we feel needed.
So I have a question about the history on that specific item, the, the limiting to new programs in excess of 250. Was that something that was in our past policy? Was there a, was there a cap on?
I recall the number raising not too long ago, but I could be wrong about that.
So this resolution is from, you know, 2024. I don't know the magic of 250K.
Yeah.
Just for reference, I mean, you know this. My spending authority is 29.9.
Right.
That's what I recall that. I don't remember what the number was before, but that, just inflation, basically, that the number raised, but that doesn't mean it can't lower.
Okay, I, so I think that's a discussion to have, maybe with the budget committee, discussing what that threshold should be. Or maybe we should have that discussion. But I'm, I'm open to lowering the number because that, so that's a pretty big gap. But it also, though, presumes that we've specifically approved, as a city council, we've approved that particular item. When it comes to, you know, one-time financial, non-recurring expenses, then there's no, doesn't appear that there is a limitation on that.
Could I just ask a question on that, council member? Because you are bringing up a good point. This is a little bit of a chicken and an egg thing because we can't implement anything like that at the staff level. It would, anything like that would have to be.
Us.
Right. And likely during the budget time because you don't normally have 250K sitting around and you're wondering what to do with.
Right.
But you're just bringing up a good point. I don't, it's not tethered.
Thanks for saying that.
It's not tethered to something, and it's a little bit of mystery to us as to why, I don't know.
Right, just, and I don't mean to interrupt, but what I find very interesting is, I don't think there is anyone in this city administration or on this council who has been part of the old budget committee, which is really interesting. So we don't really know what the history was, although I do remember.
I sat in on some.
Yeah, and I.
And I know of what you speak.
Which is one of the reasons why I was specific about names. You know what I mean? Because I think personalities do come into it. And we only have two, two applicants, you know, so, but anyway. We have, which brings us back to the idea of institutional knowledge, so I think is so important.
Yeah. So my, my thought is that we only went to two community members because there was a desire to appoint both Jeff Rains and Johnny Johnston to the budget committee. They both had their backgrounds in finances. That the, the addition of the second community member was a, was how they came up with a compromise. I think it's probably better to have one community member. It addresses some of staff's concerns about, you know, where those committee meetings are going to go. And, and I'm also, I don't know that I would 100% support adding the community member if I hadn't spent time talking with Clay Creasy. who I think knows these, you know, budgeting issues backwards and forwards. And I would say that, you know, in our past, we've been on other sides of political issues. And he's been extremely, I think, respectful over the past, you know, at least year or so in terms of just trying to help us out. So that would be my preference is that we do one and we appoint Clay Creasy.
I don't object to having it stay two. I mean, I'm hearing you say you like the idea of one, but do you, you don't categorically reject two? Or I'm, that's a question.
Well, I'm trying to be mindful of staff's concern that the, that it'd be primarily a meeting between City Council and, you know, the financial staff, but that, that there's someone from the community who's present, you know, to observe. And in Clay's case, you know, have constructive things to say.
I, I would like to ask staff, do they have, I mean, do you feel that one is substantially better than two in one way or another?
Let me just clear the air a little bit here.
Yeah.
So just, the way this item got to you, this part of the story was told, right? It was pulled from the consent calendar, then there was some deliberation. And then you guys said, hey, well, why don't you give us your opinion and bring it back?
Yeah.
This is just an opinion, but we will work with one, two, five, 20, whatever. This is just,
We will.
Well, let me just, let me just elaborate here.
Yeah, fair enough.
So Kristi and I, you know, we were making Welcome Back CADA references recently. So we're showing our age, but we, we just, in our city experience, we've never had a committee like this. It doesn't mean it couldn't work. It doesn't mean it wouldn't work. It doesn't mean it hasn't worked here. That's all fine. So whatever you guys decide to do, one, two, or whatever, is completely fine with us. We just were following the direction you gave us. That's all.
Seeing nods over there from Ms. Billings. And then my concern, I hope I've expressed it well, is I would just want to set the expectations for whoever is, who is serving on this, that this is not a place to rehash or circumvent policy that happens here, which I think could easily happen.
Mayor, if I could just jump in, I mean, okay, so you have a policy concern. This is based upon a resolution and a council direction. You could spend your time to really, you could make, you could direct us to come back if the council wanted us to with a, something that narrows the scope or just really zeroes it in on a certain area, whatever. Well, you know, it's your committee.
Well, I think when Ms. Billings and I spoke, we did tailor it down to, I think, three potential kind of sub considerations that we could assign, like investment policy, you know, to those kinds of things. I think we got to three. Unfortunately, I don't have my notes with me here. And, you know, I understand what you're saying about policy. And, and I understand why you're kind of saying that. But I, I think there's ways to set expectations within the group itself within the, without, you know, taking an extreme amount of time.
I, I agree with that. I just want it to happen.
Yeah, and that would be, I think, a legitimate concern. I think the longer way to do it would, you know, do the interview process and, and all of that. I don't really feel that that's necessary, but I think there is advantage and wisdom in sort of setting the boundaries as to, you know, sort of what your concern, what the concerns would be amongst the group, you know? And, and everything will change, you know? A group has its own sort of energy, right? I mean, it, it, things change. Alan and, you know, Mr. Rains and Mr. Johnston, Johnny Johnston, they're not the same two as Clay Creasy and Renee Roth. And, you know, the people on the committee are not the same as they were. So I have faith in both of these and in the committee itself that you can set the structure as to what you would like to see. It doesn't seem a, a really big reach to me. And I, but I agree it needs to be done and it, it can be done. I mean, why fly, why fly, you know, blind and waste everybody's time?
Yeah.
I, I think the, personally, I think the mayor's concerns are something that I would, you know, support in terms of, one, that the two council people would interview each of the potential, you know, whoever is going to be a candidate. And number two, that we include some type of statement that it's, the position is not a, it's not a public policy position, it's a fiscal responsibility position.
So by doing that, then you're saying, right, not go ahead with the two that have applied and the only two applicants we've had? Get this hashed down?
Well, it's still, it's still my preference that we do, and that'd be Clay.
So Councilmember Whitman, I just had a question. Are you looking for a more specific language than what we see in Section Eight on two of three advisory body? It's advisory, the committee does not possess independent decision-making authority and cannot independently direct the city manager. Are you, are you, are you suggesting that we add something else in there too about, like another language around policy?
I, I think I was actually supporting what the mayor had to say in terms of making sure that whoever the candidates are understood that they were not participating in a policymaking function. They are participating in a fiscal responsibility role.
I think Ms. Rule's suggestion with what you just read also, it, the, the language is clearly there. And if, since we'll be participating, that if we feel like it's wasting time, I'm not shy about saying that. And I will, of course, but that we would want it to be efficient and useful. So, because I think the policy you just brought up is fine. So, I mean, we know who these candidates are. We know them from being here. So with that expectation, I don't feel, I, I'm withdrawing my desire to interview since we know who these people are. But I would suggest that we should set the policy in general, not with these candidates in mind. So I would offer that an interview would be good on the next candidate. That's my suggestion.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
I think, yeah.
Okay.
It is quite likely that we won't know the next candidates or, you know, I mean, if Mr. Creasy hadn't been so self-motivated, we wouldn't know him.
That's correct.
Yeah, so anyway, I'm going to make a motion then that we do not accept the recommendation of the wonderful Ms. Billings. And instead, provide to staff that we have public representatives on the Budget Committee and that we have two of them and that they be residents.
And we, we will, and aren't you also saying you want to appoint Renee Roth and Clay Creasy?
Yeah, and, and I would like to appoint Renee Roth and Clay Creasy and move forward with this, which we have been talking about for a very long time.
The simple way to phrase the motion would be to reaffirm the present resolution and appoint Mr. Creasy and Ms. Roth.
Thank you, Mr. Summers.
I second that.
I appreciate that.
What, so I'm seconding, one small detail, to meet at least, I'm looking at page three dash five or two of three of Attachment A. To meet at least once per year to the adoption of the city's budget and as needed. That's Item E, under the duties. And I do like something that Mr. Whitman pointed out, which is maybe the first conversation with this committee would be, what's, what's a reasonable frequency to meet that's useful? And then what's the threshold that's useful? I like both of those ideas.
I, I would take those as friendly amendments. I like them also.
Is that, you got that? Yeah, it would be that the first item of the Budget Review Committee would be to ascertain the frequency and also the threshold for proposed budget, for proposed budget items. Thank you.
And we could also add, you know, any other process that the committee deems necessary.
Yep.
With an understanding that that'll have to return to the council for approval of any modification.
Okay, I think that's good.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Let's do it.
Roll call, Mayor. Councilmember Meng.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Item number four, City Council and Historic Preservation Commission. Shall I lead that? Oh, shall I start that off on our number four?
Oh.
This one's fast.
Sorry, I'm confused, Mayor, what, because? Oh, because you're, I'm sorry, because you were, however you want, sure.
I see what you're saying, sorry. I'm bringing up item number four because,
I understand, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. We had our joint meeting with the Historic Preservation Commission, as you all recall. And we agreed on an ad hoc committee. They publicly selected their two members. We did not publicly select our two members. We started with our two members. And it was myself and Ms. Meng, and we did meet, and it was very productive. And we have another meeting scheduled, but we need to publicly select our two members. So what I want to say is, I'm happy to continue to do it. I'm also happy if somebody else wants to do it. I'm completely open either way. And I believe,
I would like to continue. I'm enjoying what I'm doing. Thank you for letting me take your spot again.
Okay, I move to go forward with the mayor and Councilmember Meng as our executive.
And then just, I, I wouldn't mind being on that with Ms. Meng. But I'm also fine if you would, if you would like to, just because I have some ideas. But I can also speak to, I can speak to it informally, so, either way.
I'm fine either way too.
I'm fine either way.
Do we have public comments?
Huh? We don't have to. If you feel very strongly, I'm open to that. It's completely fine.
Do we have public comments?
Oh, yes, we do have a public comment about it. We have,
We have Brian.
We have Jeffrey Starkweather.
Oh. We don't have Brian.
And Brian Akins also.
Oh, and Brian Akins.
I think Jeffrey has left the house.
Please.
Brian Akins, before I take off my museum hat that I just had on for the last thing, I just want to tell you all very much, thank you very much for the support of the museum. We are doing fabulous things with that support and going to continue to do that. And as the treasurer for 16 years now, I watch every penny. Hat off. Now the HPC, I'm just popping up here to thank you for forming this committee, for council people to, to take the time out of their busy schedule to meet with the Chair and Mr. Walker in that committee. I appreciate this. This goes back to August when we had a, a bit of confusion. I thank, again, the city manager for making time for me that Friday afternoon and for, and, and now we're getting to, getting some resolution to that. So again, thank you all and thank you for, for your time on that.
Thank you, Mr. Akins. I, I will say, I do see one slight advantage, which is the topic of the conversation is sort of, how does the council generally work with the HPC at this point? Because what's their mandate? How are they working with the council? So I'm happy either way, but it is a very, it's philosophical conversation at the moment. So the idea, they're not looking for new ideas exactly. It's more like, how are we working together well?
So if that's, That's more a process question than a philosophical question in my mind. I mean, if you say philosophical, then I'm, I'm all in. If you say process question, I'm less in. I mean, I hate to say that. I mean, that's,
It's not as simple as are the forms filed correctly, et cetera. It's more like, how, tell me if you disagree. It's something like how that the HPC has some guidelines about what there's to be working on. And since there has been different councils with potentially some different direction or a lack of clarity on some direction, they're looking for some direction. That was part of our joint meeting. So this is the conversation now that goes deeper into philosophically, how do we think as a community? What's the value of the council for historic preservation in general? How do we work with them? Because we see examples where they feel they have a role, but maybe staff has not felt they had the same role they think they have, et cetera. So that's what we're working through.
Yeah, and I've had conversations with Gina, who happens to be my neighbor, about this over the fence. I would still be interested, because I am interested in, you know, what they focus on and, you know, how we can interface with them to be more supportive and for them to be more relevant. You know, because I think that in a disconnect, right? They feel a lack of relevance and certainly a lack of support. I mean, I don't know, it's not certainly, but, you know, there's got to be some communication bridges. That having been said, I'm really okay with, if you would like to stay with it. I didn't happen to get agendized for that particular meeting. Sorry. I, I missed that joint meeting because I didn't get, I wasn't properly agendized. So I'm, I'm unclear
Oh, I see.
as to what did happen.
You can, but that's recorded.
Yeah, I thank you for the clarification.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry, Wes, I mean, no problem, no. I could, if it really mattered to me, I wouldn't have mentioned it.
So I just have a question about, so if you two have already been working on it together, would in, okay, you have one meeting, okay. Because I'm wondering if it would be a Brown Act violation for you to take one of their places or, you know, like, just,
That's the question.
Just making sure.
If the conversation would be shifting with a slightly different focus in the shift on personnel, then I think we can safely say that it would not have been a Brown Act violation and shifting from one to another. I think also those two-by-two conversations can't make any decisions.
Correct.
No final action can come from any two-by-two conversation. Anything would have to come in a recommendation through some sort of process, depending on what the recommendation is for. So I think you're comfortable to do so, but be mindful that it's not straight, here's everything we discussed last time and rehash it. It's, all right, we're meeting together, here's our focus going forward.
Okay, thank you.
I'm happy to defer and let me know how it goes.
I certainly will, thank you. You are on quite a lot of committees, by the way.
No, no, yeah.
I feel, I feel like I'm, I'm helping you out here. I'm giving you some free time.
So, so our motion will be that we are nominating Ms. Meng and Ms. Rule for their ad hoc committee with the Historic Preservation Committee. That's the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay.
And just as a little heads up, our next meeting is the 29th then. Oh, we'll have to find a new place to meet.
Possibly.
Is that, is that May?
It's June.
June, oh, is it May 29?
It's Thursday.
Yep, yep, Thursday.
Okay.
It's, I mean, yeah, if it's May, it's in two days.
Yeah. So, and four, four to five.
Four to five, okay. Got it. Got it.
Cool.
Got it.
And then we'll just let them know our new location, which is no big deal.
Yep.
It was in my office, but I won't be there. So you guys can find a good spot. Okay, great. Oh, roll call.
Yes. We have a motion and a second to nominate Meng and Rule. Confirming.
Thank you.
Roll call, Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Meng.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
All right. Five-year, number five, five-year proposed capital improvement program. Hello, Ms. Palmer.
Good evening, all. Long evening for you guys.
It's not too bad. It's only 9:30.
It's only 9:30, okay. I'll try to get you out of here by 10:00. I mean, at least for the next item.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let's see here. Well, good evening, Mayor, council members. So I will be presenting tonight to you the draft CIP. So it is a draft and I'm looking for your feedback tonight. So I will kind of launch in. I've got a slide presentation for you. But you can see in your packet, you have a nice summary here. It's on page three. I guess it's the colorful sheet, the first colorful sheet with the projects and, and a dollar amount, so that's helpful. I just wanted to mention as well that this was indeed a group effort. I have worked with the city manager's office. I have worked with finance. We have looked at the funding and, and got fund balances. And so we've programmed the funding for these projects. So, and one other thing I would like to add too is the, the projects are based on, we've got a storm drain assessment. We've got a pavement management program that we've put together, five-year pavement management plan. The projects that will be coming out of your goals are, have not been, The projects that will be coming out of your goals are, have not been included because, of course, we don't know what those are yet. So, so, and this is also, um, the CIP is a snapshot in time, meaning it will be changing throughout the year. It, dollar values go up, projects come and go, but this is a starting point, and this is what we as staff have developed. So, um, with that, I'll start. So, let's see. So I will also be, so I'm, I'm planning on presenting the next five years, but also the current year and projects that we've completed this year. So. So let's just start with what a CIP project is. I get that question asked of me rather frequently, um, and it really, it builds, improves, or preserves the life of a city asset. And that is as opposed to operating costs. So we're talking about a city asset, whatever we need to do to maintain that or build on that or whatever, that's what a CIP project is. We generally use the figure of about fifty thousand. It, that's, that's just a gen, a generalization, but kind of a good starting point. Also, how are these projects prioritized? Well, we always start with health, health and safety. And then your goals and objectives come in in second place. And then asset preservation and extend the useful life, again, of a city asset. That would be a facility, it could be, um, infrastructure or whatever the city asset is. Regulatory requirements come into play, um, and new or expanded services would be a result of, say, your goal session. So, and feel free to ask questions along the way. I kind of can talk quickly and get through slides, but just speak up. So, some of you've seen this slide before, possibly, but I like to explain sort of the life cycle of a capital project. It's, it's, it's a long process, it really is. It starts with an idea, you can see the light bulb at the top left corner. It's like, we have an idea, here's something we want to do. You voted on an item tonight, spent a lot of time talking about that. It started with an idea. So you go through this entire process. You start with an RFQ, an RFQ, RFP to, um, to get a design going, whether a concept design, preliminary design, or something like that, before you go into a final design. And so I've put the, the figures at the bottom, the, the, sort of the timeline, the range, or between two and six months and even beyond. Then you, you, you get a preliminary concept design, so you're looking at that, that studies, that's alternatives, it's, um, estimates and updates, et cetera. Then you move into a final design. So we've got, again, we're, we're talking three to nine months there, so that's right-of-way acquisition, um, which we will be discussing, I will be discussing with you in a, in a little bit of time, probably on ATP phase two. You've got environmental and permits from other agencies, for example, Caltrans. We have to work with Caltrans to get permits. Then you put a bid package together and you refine the estimates, so we know what we're looking at when we go to the next phase, which is bidding. We want to know a general idea of what we're looking at. So, um, and then after you're in the bid process, which is two to four months, and, and you can see the council actions and the council input on a regular routine capital project, we're back, I'm back talking to you numerous times. And then we go into construction, and the construction phase can be three to twelve months and beyond. We'll be dealing with that with our cabin village that we're talking about right now. So we execute the contract, then the submittals for materials, construction management, materials testing, et cetera. So there's a lot that goes on. And then the project closes out. And so when the construction's over, the project's not. We're releasing bonds, we're exonerating bonds, we're, um, getting our record drawings, so those are the as-built, so we know, we keep record of what was actually constructed. So, and then we're in a warranty period. And then we're done. So you can see it's somewhere between fourteen and forty months. And, I mean, that's a very broad range, but that's what the life of the project is. So, any questions?
Yes. This came up earlier. Somebody said, uh, that we needed to use a CIP for clearing away, um, fire hazardous trees on city prop. And my, my initial reaction was, oh, it's probably not CIP. But now I'm asking you, because is it a, is that a CIP project, or how do we?
I would not consider that a CIP project. I would consider that a maintenance project. And we would, we would, we could, we would have the capacity and the ability to go out and remove trees that need to be removed. It's not, I would not consider it a CIP project.
I've had a number of comments from.
Yeah, there's no asset created.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
And, and we're, and, and it's an operational cost, we want to, we want to remove trees, and if they're dead, if they're a fire hazard, and we do that regularly.
Yeah, I've had a number of constituents ask me about portions of the city where they think we need to do some aggressive, uh, removal of dead kind of vegetation.
And, and we have just recently completed a, um, a tree inventory for the entire city. So I have, finally have the final report on that, and we are starting to act on that. We've actually started acting on that. So we're removing trees that need to be removed, we're trimming trees that need to be trimmed, and we're, we've, uh, a part of the, um, the condition assessment was identifying locations of empty tree wells. So we're planning on planting in those as well. So you'll, you'll see as I go through this, um, so the tree planting that we are planning on doing, and you'll see a budget that I've put together in this CIP, and it's about two hundred thousand dollars a year for five years. And that's a capital improvement, because we are improving our, our canopy. That's an asset for us. I mean, you could, you could, it could be an operational cost, it's, it's gray, and it's just a judgment call, it really is. So.
Just a quick question before I forget. So with the trees, what you just said, getting all of that stuff dialed in and everything, has Mr. Mendoza been reached out to? Remember when we had the meeting and he wanted to be included and involved in all of that? So have you reached out to him?
We've, we've had with Mr. Mendoza a couple times, he specifically had questions about the Baranca, uh, and, and clearing there, and what we, sorry, I know that we're a little off-topic here, but the headline on that was, we would need some council direction to proceed because we have to go get permits from a number of agencies, because it's a waterway. And that, that was where that one ended up. But I, I think, I know, I had one or two meetings with him, and I think Lyndy was involved in those, yeah.
Those are the ones that I was involved in, too, yeah. But the tree inventory that I'm speaking about are, um, city street trees, um, so trees on city property. So whether that be a park or street trees. So, so you'll be seeing some activity, you've already seen some activity, so.
Where you kind of draw the line in the gray area is the planting of trees, because the asset is the canopy versus the fire hardening, the removal of trees, or the trimming of trees, which comes under a more general public works kind of approach.
It, a more operational.
Operational, thank you, thank you.
So we draw this, it's either capital or operational, generally speaking. So. So we have, um, in our CIP, we have six broad categories, and this year, for the first time, I have associated with the broad, the broad categories with, um, potential goals. I know you haven't adopted your goals yet, but there's been a lot of conversation, and there will continue to be conversation. So, um, the first category is streets and parking lots, and I just sort of loosely say, those are asphalt projects. You know, it's parking lots that are asphalt, it's streets that are asphalt. And so that, that corresponds to a couple of your goals, public safety and infrastructure maintenance. The next one is parks. And we've been a little light on parks improvements over the last couple of years, because we haven't had a parks commission. So we're hoping to get that up and running, and it will be helpful to the Parks and Rec manager and myself as well in kind of scoping projects. But you'll see a couple in the CIP, and we're looking towards the rec, you know, the commission to help us kind of scope those. So, and of course, the, the corresponding goals there. The third general category is climate, so that is wildfire safety risk mitigation and climate resiliency. We've got facilities, which is pretty simple, we have our affordable housing, we've got infrastructure maintenance, um, and then we've got stormwater, which I'll be spending a moment or two talking to you specifically about storm drains tonight. Um, and then we've got transit. So those are our, our six categories that you can see in the CIP, and they're very broad, and we try to fit most of, we try to fit all the capital projects in one of those categories, for clarity and simplicity. So a brief summary, um, so we have completed twenty-two projects, twenty-two capital projects this current fiscal year, or we are planning on finishing them in the next month. There's a couple that are on the cusp, and they total about nine million this year, so we've been busy. So we've got nine projects. The other interesting thing about the capital budget, as opposed to your operating budget, is the operating budget ends on June thirtieth and starts up again on July first, meaning the budget goes down to zero at the end of the fiscal year. Capital projects don't, don't fall into that category necessarily, because they're a lot bigger projects, and they span more than one fiscal year most of the time. So, um, so we're working on nine projects right now, that the budget has been appropriated this fiscal year, but we will be asking you to carry the budget over into next year, because the project hasn't been completed. So, it's a little different, it's a, you know, than the operating budget. So, um, in the new draft five-year CIP, we have five, twenty-five projects totaling twenty million dollars, and that's for twenty-five, twenty-six, fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. This is a high figure, but it includes nine million for the cabin village that you just approved tonight. So, nine and a half, excuse me.
Does it also include the ATP?
It also includes the ATP, yes.
Which is.
Which is three million.
Right.
And it also includes five million or so in paving.
Okay.
So, and I'll talk about those, I'll, I'll go through those, but, yes, it's a large number, and it's, it, but it's really primarily, it make, it's comprised mostly of three major projects, I mean, and, and a lot of smaller ones. So here's some completed projects, and I don't really need to go through each one line by line, but I guess I suppose I can. So streets and parking lots, so we are just finishing a paving project that I know that you are all very well aware of. Great, thank you, yes, it does feel great. And then we finished ATP phase, phase one. So, um, parks, we finished, believe it or not, the pickleball courts were just finished this fiscal year, it seems like they've been built for years and years, but, but no. Um, and then we did a small lighting project, and you can see that figure is a little small to be categorized as a CIP, but it was in the budget as such. Um, and, again, stop me if you need to. Climate, we heard you, we heard the, the people loud and clear last year, so we went to work and did a lot of climate mitigation projects. We were able to get some rebates, they're asterisk there, but we, um, the public works campus and, um, the finance building are completely, they're completely electrified now. In fact, gas service has been disconnected. So, and we're on our way to doing that, um, to all of the city facilities. But, um, we've swapped out, um, all of the gas, um, water heaters and most of the HVAC units. So, two hundred and ten thousand dollars worth, so those are the projects we did relative to climate mitigation. And then we also made quite a few purchases to that end. So we spent about four hundred and twelve thousand dollars on purchases to that end, we're, we're in the process of electrifying our city fleet. And we're doing it, you know, not all at once, obviously, because it's too costly. So, this current fiscal year, we have spent about, you have spent, I've helped you spend it, six hundred and twenty-two thousand on, on these purchases and projects. So that's not nothing. And we have a lot more program for next year. And we've got on the facilities, we've done a couple of small projects, you've noticed the bathroom over here in this building, which is nice, we're in the process of working on the other two and remodeling those. We painted the arcade inside and out, that was a number of years, um, and that's why we trimmed the plant there, too, which has come back very nicely, by the way. And we're in the process of finishing, um, we're replacing the arbor in front of the police station right now, and that should be wrapped up here in the next little while, couple of days, actually. So. Stormwater. So this is, this is, this may be a beast. So, we've, we've done a few projects this year. One of them was planned, and the others, well, one of the major projects was planned, the two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar project on Topa Topa, that was a, um, it was a lining project, and we had a city storm drain crossing a person's property with a sinkhole in their front yard. So it was an emergency repair. We, I expect to see more of this happening, and I've talked about this a lot. We've done a storm drain assessment this year, we've completed phase one, we had somebody go out there and identify all of our storm drains, all of our catch basins, and so we're starting an inventory, and we will begin developing projects, um, kind of a triage at this point. So, as part of our paving project that's underway right now, there were two locations of collapsed storm drains. One at the end of Fox, right at the, the entrance to the, the club, and then one, on, one on Grand and Lion. And you could, it was, it was an inverted speed hump. I mean, it really was, it was a dip trench. So, we were able to get some pretty good prices, because we had the contractor already out there. They were working on the paving project, they could do pipeline work. So, the two fifty thousand dollar expenditures were open trenches and pipe replacement. The two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars was a lining project, and we had to do that, because there were structures over the top, it was, it, on private property. So we're trying to be proactive now, I'm really trying to be proactive when, when we're out paving, we're going to look at the storm drains, we're going to see if that needs to be included. And you get a lot more economies of scale if you, if it's a contractor who's already going to be mobilized. So, anyways, that's, that's storm drains. So here's a list of projects that are currently underway, we've got the, um, the construction of twenty twenty-five, and we've got, we're in design, construction, so, I'm sorry, yes, that's correct. I get confused on the years, because they don't coincide with the actual fiscal year. But that's part of our PMP. So we're under construction right now, we're also under design for the next project. Finishing up on the, on the one that's underway right now, we've got ATP phase two, and we are in sort of a, a concept redesign phase right now, which I will be bringing back to you in another month or two to talk about that. We've got another, a new project that we haven't really seen before, and that's miscellaneous concrete and sidewalk repairs. So, um, I'm trying to tie that in with our street tree planting. If we, if we have to remove a tree that's not suitable for a street tree, and we need to plant a new tree, um, a lot of the trees that have been planted weren't suitable for s- street trees, and that's why we're having this sidewalk problem. So we're going to be replacing sidewalk along with that project. I'm really trying to sort of marry some of these things together that are logical to do so. We've got, um, an arc, the arcade parking lot, and that's the arcade at, um, at the corner of Matilahaw and, um, and Signal. I'm, I'm calling it the arcade parking lot, because we always refer to it as Rainbow Bridge, but we have discovered, we know now, that that parking lot is partially owned by the Rains family and partially owned by the city. So, I've renamed it, for reference sake, because there's two parking lots there. And we've got an, an EV charging station going in at Sirzodi, and our, our Kenton Hall bathroom remodels, and our street replanting, which will be an ongoing project. And we've got our trash excluders, which are also a part of our storm drain system. So we put a screen in to exclude the trash, so when it rains, so.
So will the, um, sidewalk around Cabin Village, that, do we think that, no, that would be separate?
That is completely separate, because those, that is going to be a new sidewalk. These are sidewalk repairs. So these are probably four by four squares that get removed, because we've ground them as many times as we can, and they're popping up. So that'll be separate. So, questions? Okay. So, here's our year one projects, um, in streets and parking lots. So we have a four and a half million dollar budget for, um, for the paving project, which we will be awarding, probably, we'll be going out to bid late in the summer. We're in, in the process of finalizing design right now. And then we've got, then we start on our next year's design right away, they're like overlapping. Then we got phase two ATP. I can't, I can't be very specific on that right now, but there will be further discussions on that, for sure. And along with phase two, we've got these flashing beacons that many of you have asked for.
Didn't we have those before when they took the deal?
Which one, is that one or two?
This, so the construction, we're underway with design right now for the, for the parking lot.
Hold on one second, guys. It's hard to hear when they're talking. Go ahead.
So, so we're in, so this, starting in year one, it'll be under construction. It's currently in design. The same pocket, parking lot we're talking about.
No, no, okay.
So it'll be, it'll be from, um, it'll be from Montgomery all the way to Signal. It'll be that whole back area of parking.
I was talking about the beacons. I was saying, no, that's okay. We, we had said, oh, we want flashing lights across the ar- across Main Street at the arcade and the park. But also we were bringing up Montgomery. Yeah, okay.
That is both.
Oh, it's both. Okay.
So it'll be a part of phase two ATP.
Cool.
And so that's what, I was just general on Ojai Avenue. So we're looking at a couple of locations.
You answered one of my questions. Thank you.
Do you recall, I recall there being flashing, I don't know if they called them beacons, remember? And everybody wanted them. They put them in and everybody complained like, oh my God, it's-
Wouldn't, wouldn't these be similar to the ones like in front of Westridge?
Yes.
So that, that one that people complained with, I do remember. And then there was one that had a little person in there and all that. So these would be the ones that would fit more with Whispering Oaks, Westridge.
And not the same design what was in-
No, I think it's what, it will match what's there.
And, and we can, and we can discuss that too, exactly what it is. And that will be part of-
The crosswalk.
Okay, yes, yes, yes.
The crosswalk flashes.
Okay, per, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Like by Jim and Rob's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, right.
By, on ATP phase one in front of Nordo.
That's it. Okay.
And we can discuss the specifics when the time comes. So.
Where, where, there's been so much request for that.
I, I get that too.
I know you know. I'm sure you do.
And we've been trying to hold off because again, we can go back to that prior slide. We need to get Caltrans approval for any work we do in the, on Caltrans right of way.
Understood.
So, um, and then we've got our ongoing, our ongoing concrete projects too. So you saw them in the last slide and they're continuing on. So in parks, we have a couple of projects and we are hoping to get some direction. There's been a lot of discussion about a playground out there. So we've got a, we've got a budget for it, proposed in the CIP and in the following year. So there's a couple, a couple of different projects. So, and we're looking towards the new commission to help Christie and myself scope that. See what everybody wants.
Yep, thanks. Wonderful.
And all of these projects, you will see them again because they're all over thirty thousand, over Ben's signing authority. So you will be seeing them and approving contracts.
Great.
So, and then, and then we have another new project, um, an outdoor workout gym perhaps at Sarzoti.
Yeah, cool.
You can?
Um, uh, did, is there, has there been, uh, any, any movement or direction on, um, on a pickleball, the wall for the pickleball around the pickleball court?
Well, we, we're getting, that's one of my items too.
I'm sorry.
It's under the removed items that we see it to talk about.
Yes, yes.
Or recommended for removal.
Yes, and we can discuss that.
Yeah.
But there hasn't not been, we'll, we'll discuss. Put a pin in that for now. Um, so climate, we have, we have one point two million dollars program for climate mitigation projects for next fiscal year. So, um, we've got electric HVAC at Police Department and City Hall. We have another charging station at Lower Libby, Lower Libby. Um, so the citywide facility efficiency study. So we are just on the cusp of awarding a contract to a vendor, a consultant to perform that for us. So I believe, um, Mayor, you had a question on this five hundred thousand dollar funding.
I would, yeah, exactly. Just that under, in the spreadsheet, it just says other.
Other. And our hope is that, and one of our goals, when we hire this consultant, we're down to two right now and we're, we're selecting them right now based on interviews and references, et cetera. Our hope is that they will find, um, funding for us. They will find grants. They will find rebates. So that five hundred thousand, that is the hope for that.
Okay.
Is this a competitive bid in process?
No, this is an RFP. So this is a request for proposals for professional services. But it's a, it's, it's a design build. It's sort of a hybrid.
And there's a special rule allowing design builds for energy efficiency projects where we can make certain findings regarding the savings from shifting from, uh, fossil fuels to not fossil fuels and that energy savings offsets the project cost. That contract will be coming to the council for approval once staff's made a recommendation.
Okay, so we'll be, we'll be delving deeply into that because it's half a million dollars for a study.
And, 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 and the other thing, it, it, and it may be a higher figure. It, and we may have to phase it. It may be over the course of one, two, three years. Who knows? But, but we'll know more once they do the assessment.
But it, but it's not a study. This would be actually doing the work.
Oh, okay.
This is doing the work.
It, it's a design build.
It's a design build. Okay.
So that, we'll see an assessment be, begin. First, first phase will be an assessment, but then we will move quickly to a design build. This, this process allows us to do that.
Great, got it. And that's, I guess, why it says implementation.
I do like this thinking though, that we say under climate, for example, that you see there's many kinds of solutions here, like, like tree planting and so on. And so that's where I think in all of our goal setting, we're trying to think broadly in those ways too. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Yeah. Um, so we are in the process, so as part of this implementa- or this citywide study, um, we have Sarzoti Campus Implementation. And I separated that out because that two hundred, we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from CPA. Clean Power Lines. So we, once the, once the study is done and once the assessment is done by whomever we select, we have this funding available to us via CPA to implement that. So that's what we're hoping to see with the others as well.
Cool.
And then our trees, our street tree planting, which we've already talked about. So, questions?
No, it's great.
Um, facilities, um, there it is. The, the dollar figures off. Like I said, when I put this together, this is a snapshot in time. Now it's nine and a half million. So, but it, again, it's, it's, you know, when I put this together. So we're doing a few things. We're doing, um, some metal roofs down at the equipment base at the Public Works Yard, um, a couple of other repairs, um, fencing gates, et cetera. Um, we have some facilities that we need, we have some roof and decking issues that we need to take care of. Those are we, sort of maintenance projects, but they're CIP because they're improving and maintaining the asset. And the museum chapel roof repair, we had hoped to have that complete this year, but we ran into a little bit of a timing issue going through HPC and all of that, but we got approval last week. So we'll be under construction here soon. Um, and stormwater. So we did our assessment study, um, did that, completed that this year. And now that has identified locations for us to get in with the CCTV and do, check out what the condition is inside the pipe. And that will lead us down this path on where we need to start on the repairs. So it's kind of phase by phase. Um, and the trash excluders are something we do annually. We, we have a project every single year and put these until all catch basins have an excluder. It's a mesh, so the trash doesn't flow to the ocean. Um, and then we've got storm drain improvements, which is a result of whatever the CCTV yields. So, and that's the first, that's the first project of that kind in this city for decades and decades and decades.
So quick question. I know it's been several months you brought up the storm drains are overdue for attention.
Yes.
Is it this, you know, condition where we've got them collapsing and creating sinkholes that is
Yes.
what's going on that we need to get ahead of?
Yes. And, and that is, that could be a huge elephant in the room at some point. Um, all of the CMP, so the corrugated metal, metal pipes were installed about fifty to sixty years ago, all of them. Um, in, in the county around here and it, of course, in the city. And there has been no routine maintenance. So we are starting to see so many problems with this. We saw, you know, we had the sinkhole. And then during this paving project, we're like, we've got, we have got to replace this. And, and we're going to start seeing that more and more frequently. So this four hundred thousand dollar figure is a very light figure, in my opinion. Um, I believe we're going to have to really take this into conti- here's the reality. We have streets and we have storm drains. That's the infrastructure that we maintain. We don't have water. We don't have sewer. So, um, we really need to start taking care of this. It's going to be, it has potential to be very, very problematic for the city. But I'm trying to stay, or trying to stay about this far ahead of it. So, but we will be looking at, at the, the CCTV, the, the films when we design our paving projects. At least we know which streets, you know, we'd like to get the, the storm drains done before we pave the streets. Unless we can line them and that's an option as well on some, in some cases. So the next step, um, I'm looking for, um, any feedback that you may have on this. This gets adopted with the, with the budget every year, so that'll be in June. Um, and then, um, we just continue working on these projects and we kick off next year and start on the year one projects. So this is just kind of an, an, an annual proj- process for us.
Well, and then, and then if I could just chime in, the other amendment is, as the council, as you mentioned, if, if they adopt a goal, if their goals are, you know, CIP, they decide when they want to do them, which year and so forth. We come back for that.
And that'll become apparent as you work through the goals.
Would now be a good time to talk about the recommendations for removal? Just those three pieces?
Um, sure.
Okay. Well, I mean, I'm, I want to ask, so when was the Libby Bowl improvements? I'm looking at the spreadsheet. What, and what was that? I don't know. Tell us about the recommendations.
Well, that's why it was removed, because we never really scoped it. Um, there was some thoughts and some consideration to making, you, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, sure. I, I could jump in. So what we're, primarily what this is, this is kind of a placeholder item. We anticipate, and we've already started hearing this from Ojai Valley Music. You know, they put on two shows. They've got more coming. We're expecting a laundry list of things that, that they're going to recommend need to be improved. I, I can tell you one thing, just, Lindy and I spent a lot of time talking about this one. Bathrooms need to be looked at there for sure. That's a, they were never designed to handle the capacity that they handle. And what you see now is if you do something like an art in the park all day, followed by a concert, it's not a good recipe. So we need to think, but that's just one of a few areas you need to think about over there.
There, there's some fairly wonky pipes and laterals I discovered after you and I spoke last weekend. Um, so, so we've got this, this demand at the park. Um, you know, there's an event going on all day Saturday. And then there's a concert at the park on Saturday night. And then another interesting tidbit of information that I discovered this week, the restaurants, um, on Ojai Avenue, just adjacent to the park, just east of the park, are also connected to that same lateral.
Ah.
So, you know, it's like this perfect storm going on. So, so at nights where the, where it's warm in the summer and concerts are happening, well, people are out drinking margaritas, eating Mexican food at the restaurant too. So it's all just happening.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. So then, well, we, I know, we've, we got a lot of feedback on the pickleball sound wall.
Yeah. So do you want to speak to that or would you like me to speak to it?
Well, this is a council decision to make. Um, so there's been a lot of discussion about this and we put a placeholder in pursuit to direction. Lindy and I talked about it a lot. In, in looking to deliver something to you guys that will actually achieve what you're hoping it to achieve, we can't in good faith recommend funding this because i- it'll mitigate the sound a little bit. And maybe if you're just doing this for political reasons or optics or for, as a gesture, that's fine. But just know that it's not going to remove the sound issue. We, in my prior city assignment, we insulated a couple of walls and went through a similar effort and unless you put a, a lid on the top, if you will, a ceiling, that the sound dissipates. So that's why we couldn't in good faith tell you that you should go ahead and proceed with this without, if you want to, that's of course your decision, but we're giving you that caveat that it's not going to completely solve the sound issue.
So, um, from a process standpoint, would that sound barrier project have to come to us with a contract to approve?
Yes.
And that would be the time to discuss?
Yes.
Yes or no?
Yes.
That's one way you could do it.
Cause I, cause I'm, I'm leery of
Yes.
going too far down that road without the public being notified.
Sure, we can do that.
I, I meant to say, oh, sorry. You go ahead and I'll go.
Well, I, uh, so we had that sound study done, the, the one, I think it was two years ago now. And didn't there, didn't they say that the, that a thirty-foot wall would reduce the sound? Wasn't that the conclusion of the sound study?
I believe so. One of the challenges that we've found as staff, and I've worked with, um, Christie at Parks too, we cannot find another agency that has built a sound wall that accomplishes what we hope it accomplishes. You know, as Ben just mentioned, if you don't fully inclu- sound travels, we know this. Um, you know, if, if you've got walls around, even if they're thirty feet, sound's going. It's going over the top. It's, you know, so, so we would be coming back to you, um, and it would be a discussion. It would be open conversation.
Cause what I was going to say is, it seems to me that the research phase is warranted to say, without spending the money, I mean, just the research money. You say, here's what, here's what we can do for this amount of money. Here's the sound mitigation and then we decide. But that it's, we even, I'm hearing you a hundred percent. We should explore it before we say it's not worth it.
Right.
I, I agree. We should explore it.
Okay.
We, we did make that, um.
We said that from the beginning.
We did, and, and so we should. And we do have a sound study and, you know, it's now two to three years old. Maybe acoustics have improved. Who knows? But I, I think it's worth an investigation for sure.
Yeah.
And this might be also a project that may go to the Parks and Rec Commission first for discussion.
That's interesting. Yeah.
I, I'm thinking that you can, all of s- really should at least be passed by them so that they're more fully integrated as quickly as we can possibly get them integrated for, um, you know, their perspective and, and positions. Yeah.
Get them in position.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
I, I agree. So then if, the third one though, the shade sale on Soul Park. So tell us about that.
Yeah. So, um, that's an interesting one because I have observed, I wanted to actually observe a full year of, of the shade that we have out there. And I've heard nothing but good things about the existing shade that is out there right now. Um, the challenge that we have in, and again, it is entirely up to you to decide. The problem with, that I was having in designing it is in order to, to get, to achieve the shade that we want, we need to have drapes down the side because of the location of the sun. Unless it's directly overhead, the shade is on the court and not down the aisle.
Right.
Um, what I've seen and what I've experienced and what I've heard is with the umbrellas, you, you pop them up and you get a shade wall. So w- w- we need to decide if that's something we still want to move forward with or kind of put a pause on it. Um, but I've heard from so many people out there that these umbrellas are doing a great job.
I was gonna, my feedback is the same from people. I haven't heard anybody say, I can't believe this is being taken off the list. Not a single one.
I haven't either. I haven't either. So, you know, we can put a pause on it and, you know.
We can always return to it.
We can, absolutely, absolutely. And if the need arises between now and next year, again, this is a snapshot in time. Projects can be added and projects can be removed and re-scoped, et cetera.
And, and I, I will say, we have not played through the summer.
E- exactly.
And, you know, and, and, I mean, I, I go to Soul often numerous times during the day. Uh, there's nobody playing in the afternoon. There's nobody playing, you know, after, between noon and four on the hot days.
Right.
And when we hit those hot days, you know, except for the young folk and more power to you. Yeah.
No, and, and that's, that's, to your point, that's the other element that I've considered. People aren't playing pickleball in the middle of the day when they would be getting the shade from an overhead shade structure. It's too hot. The, the, it's too hot.
Well, then, I said, let, then, I mean, you're not asking for guidance, but I see no reason to revive this with.
Unless the shade, the shade structure would really, you know, make it palatable to play during those hours, you know, in a hundred degree weather, which I, I can't imagine that anything can, quite honestly.
Go swimming.
Yeah, exactly.
Where's the pool? Where's the pool, the Soul Pool here?
She's waiting for our goals.
I know. Okay. Thank you. I'm just kidding.
So you, there, really at this, thank you for this presentation. It's really fun to watch all these things and congratulations on all the work. And so we're just receiving your report today, correct? It's wonderful.
That's it.
Well, but I think we did, we did, yeah, and we did take a couple of items of head nods in direction and, you know, we're going to keep that pickleball wall in there is what I saw head nods on everybody. And then also, um, I, we're going to bring projects that are related to parks before the Parks and Recreation Commission. And it sounds like we're eighty-sixing the shade structure for Soul Pickleball Court.
Thank you.
So Weston, if you could add that to the report, thank you.
And then let's have a public comment. Uh, Larry Stengel, please.
What does he have to say?
What do I have to say? Thank you, Lindy. Okay. Uh, I brought Fox Street to her attention August two thousand thirteen.
Cool. Thanks.
Um, she's doing yeoman work and that's to be congratulated. The list of projects is impressive. Um, one of the things, you have climate mitigation and a little bit about wildfire, but infrastructure, what keeps the city intact is no fire. Okay. Um, I don't know if this would be the time or the place to talk about fire mitigation as part of infrastructure, as being part of the budget. Like quarter of a million a year, whatever it is, ongoing because fires aren't stopping. So you have a list of projects. Uh, somebody help me write this because I really don't write letters well. Um, while the city has a list, it makes competent systematic efforts to develop, fund and implement these projects, your projects, fire projects, what have you. These items are not ones for which the most part the city cannot be accomplished by city staff as they're already overloaded and lack the necessary expertise to do what needs to be done. They're doing- They're doing other work, they're not experts in fire, they're doing the management, the city.
Great.
Um, you do however, have an organization that's already done meaningful work. They took a grant of fifty thousand dollars and turned it into a million too. That's the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council. They should be hired to do the fire mitigation, the fire wise, whatever it takes to do this. I'm sure they have a proposal in front of you, I don't know, I'm not party to all that. That's not, but they comprise the personnel. I know they came over to my house, they checked it out, I've cut branches down, we're now going to California Maga- Mojave Stone. Um, and it's all to affect the climate. No fires, less heating, less co- greenhouse gases. Um, and they're over, currently overseeing over two million grants. In addition, their board is comprised of business people, senior officials with National Red Cross, individuals with significant fire service experience. We've got retired firefighters and EMTs all over the city. Um, in addition, they have partnerships, uh, state, local, federal, they know who to call, they know what to do. So I would strongly suggest that you add them to their, to your budget as part of infrastructure. Part of, you know, with mitigation, you've got fire, you've got climate, it's another line item, some number there, and hire them so that she doesn't have to do it, he doesn't have to do it, you don't have to do it. It's give them the keys, see you later, and goodbye. All they have to do is give you a quarterly or a monthly report as to how many houses are getting firewised, or whatever it takes, but put them on the infrastructure list, because without the fires, there is no, without, with fire, we don't have an infrastructure.
Mr. Stengel, you hopefully have seen that an item like this is in our goals, and that we'll be talking about those next week?
Right.
And it may not fall as a CIP project necessarily? So, that you bring it up, it's, I just want to suggest it's slightly premature, we're going to discuss it next week.
Right, but not in two weeks.
Um, I think it's next week.
No, I, I'm sure, no, I did, I just want to make sure it's in the, as a budget, as a normal course of events.
Understood. Thank you very much. Thank you. No any comments online?
I was watching.
Thanks, boss.
No raised hands on Zoom.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. So, we have a decision to make, it is ten fourteen. We have a closed session, um, scheduled, public employee performance evaluation. So I'm going to leave it to us, normally we, when we get to this stage, we say it's too late, but I'm, I'm here, all ears.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with doing it, I don't think it's.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so then we will adjourn to our closed session.
You won't turn to Pumpkin on us, Miss Rule?
Um, no, my brain, my brain, you know, it, it goes into cognitive overload, really, about, about ten o'clock, but that's fine.
I told Mr. Gilman that.
Yeah, yeah.
All good, uh, say that as, and we don't need to do it now. It's sort of part of the protocols of closed sessions, I'd like an open session at some point for the people who call close, so that the public knows, um, who actually called it. Because I've gone back over the last two years and I don't know who called any of the closed sessions, and I think to, so, we don't need to do it now, but I think it's just.
I'll say that I wanted.
Okay, but, and we, and we, for a closed session, you need two people to put it on the agenda.
No, and I'm happy to say that, um, there were, I heard from Mr. Whitman and Ms. Bang, and I'm very interested in, if there are especially, maybe a councilperson, but two, that want something to be discussed, I'm very eager to want to make that space. So, you could say, I did it.
No, no, I totally agree, I just, I just want transparency onto who is calling it, that's all. Whether it's, I mean, two people can do it, I assume, three people for a special for an item on the agenda, although it used to be three people for a specific date, but that was sort of an informal understanding, I thought, but anyway.
We're trying to formalize.
Yeah, I, I'm all good with it, I just wanted to be as transparent as possible.
We should also orally state what we're, what the council will be meeting in closed session to discuss.
And should we also, do we close out our main session? Like, the, do we close out this session and then open up a new session?
No, this is all, this, the, this is agendized at the end of the regular meeting. So this closed session is not another meeting. Um, this closed session is set by the council to consider the public employee performance evaluation of the city manager. No reportable action is expected.
Right.
Back to you, Mayor.
Yes, we're about to go in. Yes.
Mayor, for recording and broadcasting purposes, do you expect to reconvene and have a report out? For broadcasting?
I don't think so.
Because I just have a question, does that mean you have to stay to do it, or whatever, if we go?
Staff is more than willing to stay.
I'm not expecting action, actionable items at the end.
I, I don't, right, I think more of a discussion for.
Yeah, if there's an actual item, we'll have to get it scheduled or something.
Okay, and would it make sense for us to, to, if, if there, we don't know if there's an actionable item or not yet, would it make sense to have sta- have any kind of reports that we need to have and close out the pub, this public part of the meeting? So that we have to come back?
City managers.
Yeah.
That would be wise, to close out the rest of the public meeting.
Okay. Great.
Palmyra, the.
Okay, yep, so good, so any council member reports?
Yeah, I'll do a quick one.
Okay.
I went to the Local Heroes, um, presentation about ten days ago at the Turrell Conservancy, and they sponsored a program for, um, junior and senior high school students. Uh, they all, they competed over their projects that were all related to, um, the, our water basin, our, uh, and, I guess, I'm not using that right. The watershed, and concerns about how that impacts our future. And they were all oriented towards educating, uh, like, middle school age kids. And I thought it was a good, it impressed me, one, that they were bringing up very smart projects, but also they're engaging our youthful community and thinking more about our.
That's great. Similarly, I, the last student, City of Ojai Student Council met, it will break for the summer, return in the fall, and I'm hoping that I'll let you all know and invite each one of you. And, uh, Ms. Lang reported last, or the time before, which is really great for the kids to hear, and then we had Christie Rivera this time talk about Parks and Rec, and she noted a whole long list of suggestions from the kids about what to have, where to market, lowering the age threshold, so, it was really great, um, so there'll be just more of that starting next year.
And I have one, one thing. Um, so I attended a, uh, transportation roundtable with Representative Carbajal and a few others from Ventura, including Eric Martinson, the executive director of the VCTC. And it was a very informative roundtable in which he discussed, uh, the, what's happening on the federal side with funding of transportation projects, including, so we talked about surface transportation, which includes roadways, bikes and bike paths. And, um, and so, you know, he, he, uh, he made a, a strong statement about advocating for, uh, Ojai and for Ventura, um, for any of the funding needs that we have for our, our surface transportation. But it was really, uh, I thought, a, a worthwhile meeting where I got to talk to him about the trolley and about our bike paths, and also about these lights, the flashing lights at the crosswalks. So, so, um, we'll be following up on some of those conversations.
Thank you. Great, um, city managers report?
No report.
Great, any future agenda items?
I would just like to discuss what we briefly talked about, um, as a council, getting together for more community outreach. Um, you know, I don't know how often, I think it could be up for a discussion, but just, you know, to engage, to help with that transparency and communication.
I second that too. Some forums that were just communicating with the public, no action, just hearing, that would be great.
Listening, talking.
Sounds good.
Weston, did you grab that one? Great, thank you.
All right, we'll go into the closed session.